All right, well, it's 6:30 and in our, in our desire to finish on time, we better start on time. So, we will get started. Tonight is Monday, March 18th, 2024. This is a meeting of the Minnetoka City Council. It is a study session, and I will call this meeting to order, and then I will start at my far left, and we will go around and introduce ourselves, and we'll do that, and then we'll go back to the back wall and have everyone just say, uh, state your name.
We're in a dominant assistant city manager.
Karine Heine, city attorney.
Aaron Nelson, finance director.
Mike Funk, city manager.
Patsy Foster-Bolton, Ward 1.
Rebecca Shack, Ward 2.
Brad Wirson, Mayor.
Kizzy Coakley, Ward 4.
Paula Romano, Ward 3.
Kimberly Wilburn, at-large.
Will Manchester, public works director.
Julie Wish, not community development director.
Kelly O'Dea, recreation director.
Kevin Fox, interim fire chief.
Scott Borbom, police chief.
Rachel Ewan, captain of local citizens.
Andy Gardner, police captain.
Jason Tate, deputy chief of police.
Introduction.
Ann Jennings, scoreboard, Bar &amp; Grill.
Bob Tinsley, Bajra Restaurant.
Kirk Anderson, Hopkins Football Boosters.
Nate Runquist, Minnetoka Rotary.
Lynn Melcher, Hopkins Youth Hockey Gambling Assistant Gambling Manager.
Chris Rosenlund, Minnetoka Rotary.
And Deb.
Deb Calvert, City Council, at-large.
Great. I think we got everybody. Thank you all for being here tonight. Um, let's see, that brings us to item three, um, which is business items, and we'll start with, uh, Mike, I don't know, Mr. Funk, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to make for jump into the agenda, otherwise?
I don't think so. Mayor and council, good evening. Uh, this first agenda item, as you just, as noted, is a discussion related to charitable gambling for our liquor license establishments, and so a discussion here this evening. Really, Mayor and council, turn this over to Julie Wish, not our community development director, for her presentation. We've got about, I think, 20, 30-minute type presentation to give you a lot of this background information related to charitable gambling, and allowing time for conversation. So, kind of tonight's agenda is full, as you noted, Mayor, and so we're, we're hoping we give you a good, quick, robust conversation in the next 45 minutes.
Forty-five minutes sounds good. Julie?
Thank you. Um, I was telling Kelly before the meeting, this is probably one of the harder reports I have had to write lately. I don't know why. The subject matter was just more difficult to write about in terms of, um, what exactly charitable gambling is, what the history is in Minnetoka, and, um, how this proposal might work. Uh, and so I think it's very difficult to, um, what do you got there? Different? All right. Uh, difficult to explain. So I'm gonna try to kind of piece through it. I should ask, is everybody familiar with charitable gambling in some fashion? Some fashion. Okay. Barely. If you were to rate yourself on one to 10, 10 being the most that you understand it, how, what's the number? You got a five?
Five.
Five? You got three over here.
I would say more like three.
Three. Okay.
Four.
Okay. Rebecca?
Six, maybe?
Okay. All right. That helps me, 'cause then it helps me understand how deep I should probably go into some of this. So I appreciate you just sharing with me what your experience is. So, the definition of charitable gambling, and this is under the state law, is really the operation of any lawful gambling activities by an organization that is eligible for a license, or from the state gambling control board to conduct such activities. So, basically, that's the premise of charitable gambling. Some people might ask, well, what, doesn't Minnetoka allow some gambling? And we do. We have charitable gambling in the city, and there's an ordinance about it. Where we don't allow it, though, is where there's a, an existing liquor license. So, that's the difference between what is in Minnetoka and what is in other cities. So if you asked, how many permits have we issued for charitable gambling? Over the last 10 years, there's been about 85 permits, um, that were issued for that kind of activity. So, think of a raffle for something, or some kind of, um, uh, something charitable that's going on with a church, or a synagogue, or some kind of foundation, that sort of thing. Um, so that happens pretty regularly. And the city, not only city staff, but city council members, uh, the mayor has been contacted by various folks about trying to have the conversation again about reopening, um, this, this idea of charitable gambling within an establishment with a liquor license. So that's why we're here tonight, and you did express that you wanted to talk about this when you met, um, as a group to kind of plan out your year. Yes, that's working. There we go. So, really, if you didn't know, there, the state agency that regulates this type of activity has actually been around since 1945. I wasn't, I didn't know that. I didn't know it was around for that long of a period. I guess it, it has been longer than most people think. The definition of who can be licensed, though, is it has to be a nonprofit, uh, either a fraternal veterans' group, religious, or other nonprofit, and they may apply for licensing if they've been in existence for at least three years and have at least 15 members. So not everybody can do this sort of activity. So it has to meet those parameters to do the activity. I don't know if we have more chairs for people. I don't know if we have more guests coming in, but if somebody can get more chairs, that would be great. Um, in addition to licensing, organizations are required to get separate premises permits, and that comes from the director of the board for each location where the gambling would be conducted. And like licenses, they're perpetual, meaning they stay around, um, as long as that entity is conducting the nonprofit, uh, activities. Um, this is the ordinance that's actually on the books today about what charitable gambling activities can take place. That's in section 605, if you're familiar with how the code's laid out. 605 deals with a lot of business regulation and licensing regulation, so. And this is a section in the liquor law area that is the preventative part. So this is the actual language that talks about gambling, and then the fact that people who have operations that involve liquor can't do gambling. It's interesting, when I was doing the research for kind of what was happening in Minnetoka's history, and why this kind of never has, has seen the light of day as far as, um, uh, something allowed in the city code. In the, um, 1980s, um, the state abolished local licensing regulations for gambling, um, and it allowed the city to have some authority, and there was some pressure at that time, and I was finding quite a few requests to do gambling, um, and they actually voted down every single application. Um, think about the Will Hop that was on Highway 7 and Bullistin Road.
I've been there.
Yeah. Bone Shakers. Remember that restaurant?
No.
Okay. She's, Paula remembers that. Um, so there were restaurants that were interested at that time, and the councils really took a hard line at, at that point. And every decade since then, there really hasn't been that much interest from the council level to do it. So when people ask me, why does it, why does an ordinance say what it does, it's, it's usually the basis of what the council believes at that time. So, that's kind of where, um, the history is. So how does it really work in terms of the city aspect of charitable gambling? And basically, it's a pretty easy change in terms of the language, however, it's really complicated, all the elements that have to go into the change if you want to do that. So, it, I just took the section out of the state kind of charitable gambling law. It requires the city to approve a premises permit. Um, it also requires us to decide whether or not we're gonna have local taxes. It also asks if we would have more stringent gambling regulations than the state law. Um, and that does include that complete prohibition. So we are able to do that, um, as we have done today. And then I started thinking, I need something visual, um, because I think it's hard to kind of comprehend the organization, the premises, who is using it, how does the money get funneled, and I thought this was the easiest way that I could probably explain it. So, in the middle is a charitable organization. They have to have a host location, though. So that would be a bar, restaurant-type atmosphere typically is where you see this happening. They can, in the host location, sometimes you see the host location have a separate kind of area, and that's a separate, um, the entity itself, the charitable organization's usually running that. They have people that sit in the booth, if you will. There's also cases where the host location will sell it at the, kind of behind the bar. Sometimes you'll see boxes behind the bar, and the bartender will be the people distributing the charitable gambling. Um, this is in a pull tab situation. Um, what happens then is, on the left side is, the state is controlling it. They're licensing, they're monitoring, they're enforcing, they're taxing. There's a lot of aspects that are happening on the state level. But on the city side, you know, one of the main decisions you'll probably have to think about is whether or not we'll see up to 10% of the net profits that would go to the city, and that can be for a variety of approved, there's a list of approved uses. I think I linked it in the report for you to take a peek at. The state also says that if you're a charitable organization, you have to give at least 30% of your profits to a charitable recipient. So, think about, I think, were we from hockey? Who's hockey back here? Okay. So we have a hockey association. They're giving most of their money, I, you know, I would assume to some of their hockey participants, but then they also give to the wider community. So, there's lots of different examples of who they give to, and I don't have all that information for you. You can probably have a conversation with those, um, charitable organizations if you want to get that deep into it. On the left-hand side of the screen, I'm also showing you, it's not just pull tabs that we're talking about, it's things like electronic pull tabs. Um, it's a kind of a immersive iPad experience where you're pressing, you're loading money onto it through someone who's loading the, the dollar figure, and then you're playing the game on an iPad. And then on the very left, if you can't see it, it's a meat raffle. So that's meat in front of a, a wheel. So, I mean, it can come in various forms, but, um, that's generally the main ways that we see it used in and around.
Spin for dinner.
Minnetoka. So one of the main questions you have to ask is, what are you gonna require for the residency requirements? So, the location of the nonprofit, does it have to be in Minnetoka? Or do people just have to live here who are on the board, and not necessarily the charitable organization isn't based here, but the people who are on the board are Minnetoka residents? Or are you gonna say it's something a little bit more casual, meetings have to occur in the city? And then, when I looked at Bloomington, was the most recent example of a city that updated their charitable gambling ordinances, and they were, they did a city survey, and about half the cities they looked at, um, required an entity or its members be residents within the city. So that's one thing you have to think about. And then the charitable fund contribution. So the city or county can, uh, require up to 10% of its net gambling profits. That's a big word there, so don't, don't think it's the gross, it's the net of their profits, 'cause this is after they do all of their, um, administration and spending. Then, um, you would have to, at some point, decide if you wanted to take that, and then decide what to use it for. Um, I would say, try to stay away from answering that question tonight. I think you could probably get really sidetracked in trying to answer where you would spend the money, but there's a lot of good uses of that money. Also, don't ask me how much money I think we could receive, because I have no idea. Really depends on how many establishments there are, how many charitable organizations there are, and all of that is TBD, 'cause I can't really even give you an estimate of what that might be.
The table you provided had some of that information.
I know. That was from other cities, though, but I can't tell you what it would be for Minnetoka. So, and it could be very different here, if, let's just say, only two locations set up, you know, as compared to other cities, or it took long, a longer period of time to, you know, make some of this occur.
Got it.
Um, so out of the 10 city, some, 10 cities out of the ones surveyed, there were, um, 5 to 10% was their contribution. So there were some that had lower contributions, but if they did have a contribution, sometimes it ended up being 10%. And these were the numbers that we were seeing. Um, and then you would develop a, a distribution process, and then we would have to report annually to the state. So, one option is you just don't require it, right, and you don't have to deal with it, you don't have to do anything. So that's, that is definitely on the table. And then, it cannot be used for staff time that administers the, um, paperwork for this. I'll show you another area where we can charge for that. Another area of, uh, that needs to be determined, and I think probably this is the one I spent the most time with, when I was thinking about the report, is the trade area. And I think in the report, I was thinking about, um, adjoining, and, what did I have here? I'm looking at the numbers. So we had three school districts, but then I was also thinking about all the other schools. So we have District 287, and we have charter schools, and we have, you know, there's lots of different school things that don't necessarily fall into the three big buckets, like Minnetoka, Wazza, and Hopkins High School, so, or Hopkins, um, school districts. So there's a little bit of that thinking going on. Then there's also nine adjacent cities. So if you look at every piece of Minnetoka's borders, I kind of put out what cities those were. So if you put it, San Onofre School Districts, that's a pretty big area. We all know how big those school districts are. You can get pretty far into the western part. Um, not too much the south, but definitely to the east and north. You're gonna get further than your adjacent communities when you're, when you're thinking about a trade area. Um, Bloomington actually requires 30% of the proceeds be spent in the trade area. So they're requiring, not only does 30% have to be, uh, provided to charitable activities, but they're saying 30% of the, um, money has to be spent in their trade area. Um, and then 13 cities that were surveyed, uh, they actually ranged from 30 to 100%. The average was 70% being spent within the trade area. And then, what was my final point here? Uh, average estimated trade area expenditure in Bloomington was 65%, even though their requirement was 30. So, so I just kind of put a map here to help you, um, think about how big that could be. And then finally, we have local tax. Uh, cities and counties can levy up to 3% of the organizations. Now, now we're going to gross gambling, uh, receipts, as long as the revenues are used for gambling regulation. So there are things that the city does administratively, paperwork-wise, um, process-wise, that will need to be done. Um, I've talked to a lot of cities about this particular provision. Um, some have unrolled it after adopting it, just because it's painful to document all of that and track time and, and all of that. So I think it's a little bit difficult. It might be one of those things where you want to just try it out and see how it goes, and then see how much staff time, and then, you know, you can always adopt later a local tax if you feel like it's too burdensome on the general fund. So that's my presentation. The questions in the packet were really, does a council agree that charitable gambling in liquor establishments should be considered, and then if you can get to a general agreement about that, then you should tackle the other questions. I wouldn't recommend you talk about anything until you get over the first hump. So, uh, Mayor, I'm just gonna keep it at that. Um, I'll turn it back to you for questions and discussions.
Yep. Well, before we jump into the first council question, um, council, any questions for Julie or staff? Anyone? Well, I'm always good for questions.
I have a question about the trade area. Do we want to ask all the questions, or?
Well, just, just some, I mean, you know, as we consider, you know, should we consider charitable gambling, what, what, you know, what questions do we have as we tackle that question? Um, and then, because, you know, if we, if we think it shouldn't be considered, well, then the questions become moot. So, but...
So, my only question on a larger scale is, I mean, have, in, in your research and conversations, have you heard of any problems that this has created in any way? I mean, the only thing I can kind of think of is occasionally you hear about a rogue employee who is skimming off the top or something, but... Right. I think, um, and that's really a function of the state, and so there's a couple of different departments of the state that are involved in gambling. So, um, let's just say that happened in our community, and some gambling manager went rogue and something was illegally done, right? City is actually not the enforcement arm for that to, uh, be rectified. It's really the gambling, um, control board, as well as the, uh, there was another agency I mentioned in the report, that has the control over that. So we would not, there's not enforcement activity. It's not like liquor, I mean, liquor can, you can have enforcement at the state level, too, but oftentimes, it's more of a locally managed issue. You know, we do regular enforcement, that sort of thing. Tobacco, same thing. Gambling, totally different. And you're, I mean, my sensitivity is taking on a significant burden for staff, but in talking to Mike today, and kind of in reading, it's getting it stood up, and then it's pretty minimal staff involvement, from your perspective. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a huge burden. I think the only thing is, yeah, getting it kind of organized and, and figuring out the procedures. I think that's just one lift. Once it's done, assuming it's the same folks, you know, um, that we're talking to right now, it's, that's gonna be the easier part. Um, but I, you know, I don't know until you get to it.
Yeah, right.
And I think we would report back to you during the budget season, like, hey, we're having a hard time keeping up with applications, or we, you know, we can't manage this, or, you know, and then we would let Mike know to see if we needed more staff, or money, or local tax.
Gotcha.
All right. Uh, Kizzy, and then Deb, I think you had a question, too? Deb? Is that correct? Okay. Kizzy, go ahead.
I guess I have one question, kind of to piggyback on what Rebecca was saying. I guess my question would be around, um, maybe for the chief, um, as far as, like, crime, do you think it would increase crime? 'Cause I'm thinking about, like, when you're having an establish, establishment where there's liquor and gambling, and this is maybe stereotyping from what I see on TV. I've never seen this play out in real life, but, you know, you got folks gambling with, um, drinking, and just kind of addicted to gambling, and, you know, I know sometimes people get pretty upset about they lose their money or whatever, or, and then they're drinking. And this, this is what I see on TV. I mean, I don't know. Do we speculate something, increasing police calls, maybe?
I don't, and, you know, I have neighboring chiefs, and they have this in their cities, and I have never had a conversation where they said, hey, be careful with gambling and these, and with liquor. Could it happen? Sure, but I haven't heard anybody that's neighboring to us that had that concern, so.
Okay.
I don't think it would be. Maybe it stays in, maybe that's one thing that does stay in TV shows.
TV. Okay, so, all right. That's, that was like my biggest concern, like, if people are getting drunk and, like, having, getting upset about their money and pool tabs, or something, I don't know.
All right. Thank you. And then Deb, and then, and then we'll go to Paula after you.
Yeah, I'm still trying to, I'm, I'm hearing two different things about, uh, uh, you know, just staff, you know, there's, there's, uh, sounds like not a real understanding yet, you know, what kind of a heavy lift it would be. I shared, uh, Rebecca's concern about, you know, adding to staff burden, and it sounds like really it's, it, it's sort of confined to the front end as you're trying to pull everything together, and then you sort of, more or less, hand it off to the state to enforce, and the charitable organizations to manage. Um, and so my question is, uh, you know, just making sure, I mean, I'm just wanting to make sure I understood what Julie was saying about basically recouping, uh, you know, we charge fees, or we charge taxes to try to recoup, um, the amount of money it costs to, to run certain programs, and recoup the cost of the staff time to do that. So whether it's something like, you know, inspections, or even getting something like this up and running, was I understanding that you felt like, as you got deeper into it, you could give us more of an idea before we actually had to say yea or nay, sort of what we would have to recoup to make sure that staff time was covered, and that this doesn't just become another expense to the city?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I'll have a great answer before you would adopt an ordinance. I think I would have an answer after we went through kind of this initial phase. I think you have to understand, though, that when I say, yeah, I don't know that it's a huge lift, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking scope, right? So we issue 650 food licenses a year. We issue 75 liquor licenses a year. This is not going to be, we're not gonna have 75 licenses. I mean, I think we would, I don't know what we would do, but, I mean, it's just not gonna be the same, um, amount. It's gonna be less than 75, right? So, um, I think that's where the scale in my head was going, and, but again, I can't, and I, there's only so many charitable organizations as well, so you can't have 70, there's probably not 75 organizations. Um, so, that's my educated guess, that it's less than 75. Probably more like 5 to 10, you know?
Yep.
So, that's where, but I don't have the experience yet, and I can't. Other than that, that's all I can tell you.
So, in reading the, um, just to follow up, in reading, you know, when you go to the link about guidelines for expenditures, it doesn't sound like if we can even recoup the money for that staff time, if I am understanding it correctly.
Yeah, not for the 10%. So the 10% link is just what you can spend that money on. The, the tax, uh, if you can go back to the tax side, Brandon, if you would, um, you may, there you go. You can levy up to 3% to deal with the administrative costs of it.
Okay.
But the problem with, if you levy it, and you don't know what the, you know, the taxes are, or the administrative costs are, and you overtax, you know, that's the situation I'm trying to avoid. You'd have to...
So could, so we could potentially, however, let's say we're overtaxing or undertaxing, could we change it later? It sounds like kind of a, it would be very difficult to change anything.
We would have to, we would have to adopt a new ordinance with a new tax, correct, Karine? Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Paula?
So my understanding, just to circle back with this local tax, that if you overcharge and you have to refund?
Yes.
Whatever was over.
Correct.
So if you did charge that tax, okay. Um, and then secondly, can you, um, the investigative fee of up to $250, that can go towards staff?
It can go, um, typically, that would be for the police to do the background information.
Got it.
And that's the maximum, just FYI, that's the maximum you can charge for our sides of city.
Okay, all right. And then, um, could you just, uh, clarify for me, it was temporary versus, you know, is this licensing then gonna go with the establishment, or is it gonna go with the organization?
Uh, Karine, I need your help on this one just a little bit. So, the, when you license, it's, the premises license is issued by the state, correct? And then the local approval is for the charitable organization conducting the, the activity.
Um, right. So, the state issues the premises permit. Before they can issue the permit, the local jurisdiction has to approve that.
Okay, so then they know Minnetoka is...
Okay, so then they know Minnetoka is allowing that.
Right. So, right now, anybody could apply for a permit, but if it was a premises permit, if they did, the state would contact the city and if the premises permit was for a licensed liquor establishment, the city would not approve it. And that's why people haven't been applying.
Got it, got it. Thanks.
It's kind of like, I compare it to liquor license, same thing happens with liquor. So, we have, the state will sign a liquor license, the city has to sign the liquor license.
Sign off as well.
Same kind of...
Yeah. And then, just one more thing in your research, have you found with other cities, our pure cities, that it's been a boon to business? I mean, our, you know, I understand one of the reasons is because some of our local businesses feels that it could, it's somewhat disadvantaging them not to have that ability to conduct that in, you know, bars and restaurants and things like that for charitable gambling.
Right.
Is there any data or research that shows that that would or would not be the case?
We do have one owner who had submitted a pretty detailed PowerPoint of sales information and impact kind of that they had been experiencing and then kind of the surrounding area and the locational distance and how close some of these establishments were, making the point that obviously that business might be going elsewhere because of lack of activity. So, we have that PowerPoint for your knowledge if you want to see that before your next meeting. I would say when I visit with colleagues, there's definitely, you know, you got that rent piece coming in and so that's a pretty predictable stream of rent, depending on how they do it. There's parameters with a booth versus the other kind of situation behind the bar. So, that continuous stream, I think, is attractive as well and so, but also the reciprocal business that they're getting out of it, either for a longer visit or for the fact that people are, you know, coming to that location.
Coming in to do that.
So, there's kind of two things going on.
You're going to support the local hockey team instead of going to Wendy's, they'll go to...
Right. Whatever establishment. I'm not going to name one.
Okay, yeah.
Can't play favorites today.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there other, other questions? Anyone? Anyone? I've, I've got a couple. One is, you know, I'd really love to see a pro forma P and L on where does the money go? You know, I mean, okay, you've got a charitable gambling operation. It brings in $10,000, okay? Does that all get paid out in prize money? I would say probably not. So, how much goes to prize money? How much goes, is there rent to be in the, in the facility? Is there, is there a certain amount that goes to the city? It sounds, there might be, there might not be. You know, I kind of, I want to know where the money goes and how it works. You know, I think that we've got facility owners, bars and restaurant owners that are interested in this and I don't really understand their interest other than the fact that they expect that they will make more money if they have it than if they don't. But I'm not sure what the source of that money is. Is our, is charitable gambling so popular that, that they're going to have more patrons because they have charitable gambling? Maybe. Okay, I'd like to understand that. Or do they get, do they get 10, 20, 30% off the top because, because that's the way charitable gambling is set up in Minnesota? I don't have an appreciation for where the money that comes in goes and, and I want to understand that if this is going to be something that we're going to approve. I mean, I want a business case, you know, based on reality and if somebody doesn't have the numbers for their, because they don't have charitable gambling in Minnetoka, well, I'd be happy to have it from Hopkins or from Wayzata, but I want to understand what's going on. I don't need to know the name of the establishment, but I want to see what a P and L looks like and where the money goes. I think that's, I think that's fundamental to, you know, evaluating this over time. I don't, I don't need to see that tonight, but I think it's, I think it's an important consideration to see, okay, you know, you know, I mean, it's kind of the rule of large numbers, I mean, what happens? You know, and to Kizzy's point, you know, gambling does attract crime. It's because the numbers are big and when there's a lot, when there's a lot of money, there tends to be crime. But I don't think charitable gambling in Minnetoka would be so big that that would, crime would be an issue. But I think that we just want to have the facts so we understand it. And so, those, that's my biggest question, is I just want to understand, okay, where's, how's money come in and where does it go and, and who benefits from that money beyond the charity?
Yeah, we can get that for you. The organizations we spoke with were very upfront and very detailed about information that they
Good.
They have no problem giving that information. In fact, it's, a lot of it's online.
Yeah.
They have to file reports and all those reports are online. And then, the rent limits that, I just want to make sure that everybody understood this, rent limits are set out by the gambling laws. So, let's just say you have booth operations, the org, the host, the bar or restaurant, can't charge more than 10% of the monthly gross profits. That's the maximum. And then total for all booth operations at a single location would be maximized at 1750 per month. So, all this is spelled out.
Yeah, okay.
If it's a bar operation, that changes. If it's a booth and a bar operation, meaning they have it at a booth and behind the bar, then there's different parameters. So, that is static. There's no, that's the same for every city, every city across the state. That never changes. What they do with the money, who they give it to, what their percentage of giving is, that's all filed with the state and those records are all readily available for you to look at. So, I can, I can make that more digestible for you to...
Great. Yeah, that, that would be helpful for me. And so, you know, the, the top question is, do we think, do we agree that charitable gambling in liquor establishments, bars and restaurants should be considered? And are we, are we in a position to take, I, I think we can answer that question and then we can decide what we want to do with the others, but...
Can I ask just one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, just, are we, how much of an outlier is Minnetoka in this? How many, you know, how many of our surrounding pure cities have this as opposed to don't? I can't think of any that don't. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
So, we are an outlier to answer your question.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got the comment.
Yes, yeah. Rebecca?
Thank you. So, I, you know, it has, I think it's well established that it has become harder to run a profitable restaurant and bar, period, over the course of, of time. You know, I, I worked in the restaurant business many years ago and the margins were very slim then and I think they're more slim now. And, and, you know, people choose to go into that business and, and I get it and it's a passion, but also as an outlier in Minnetoka and knowing that we're very proud of a lot of these businesses and, and the restaurants that we have and we support them, we supported them in the state of the city. And I think this is a way that we can do two things. We can help make the, put, put restaurants and bars on the same equal footing in this regard as our neighbors. And I think that we can help raise money for the community and maybe this is, you know, the 20 bucks that somebody has in their pocket that they might have otherwise bought a lottery ticket with. It keeps some of that money in the community and that goes to the trade area requirement. But, so I, I tend to be pretty in favor of this. I'm not as, I, I read the, the statute. I think it's pretty prescriptive, so I'm not as concerned about the P and L on it. I think as Brad is, although I, I understand that, I think that the market kind of sorts it out either it's worth it for the, the entity to have them there. And then, that money's coming, I think we can direct it right back into our community. And so, that's the second bit of enhancement. So, for those reasons, I'm very interested in this. I think it makes a lot of sense. If we were sticking our neck out and being the first city, maybe I'd have a different, different idea, but I don't have any reason to think that we should be any different than our neighbors.
Thanks, Rebecca. Other comments? Anyone?
I would agree with Rebecca.
Hey. Thanks, Betsy.
Yeah. I agree too. I look at it as an opportunity to bring in some money for organizations and maybe even a little bit for Minnetoka, so I'm okay with it.
So, anyone else? I mean, I'm getting head, head nods.
Mayor?
Yep, Deb?
Yeah, I would just say quickly, I shared, I actually had the same question from Mike that you posed about just sort of, you know, like where does the money go? And he gave me some of the answers. My concern has a little bit to do with just addiction. Some people that may be a little bit addicted to liquor might also be a little bit, you know, aren't supposed to be addicted to other things like gambling. And, but, you know, I also feel like we still sell liquor and we still sell cigarettes and we still do all kinds of things when people are grownups. And, you know, I was thinking, you know, who's going to do pull tabs and who would, who would suffer the consequences of poor choices the most? It would be people with the least amount of money to lose on pull tabs. So, that's, that's my only rub, but I in general agree it's definitely worth considering. And I also agree that because we can help direct money directly into the city and I totally agree that it's, it's challenging for restaurants and frankly, any retail business. Excuse me. So, I do think that, you know, looking at the surrounding cities that already have charitable gambling, many of which are directly bordering us, I very well may put some specific kinds of businesses as, as, at a disadvantage, which I would not like to do. So, I, I think we do need a little bit more information, but I'm definitely fine with considering this.
Anyone else? Kimberly?
I would just say, I mean, basically echoing what Rebecca said, I feel like reading the, the report, it lays out pretty, there are restrictions on where the money can go. So, I feel, again, pretty comfortable with, with that information going, with that information. And I feel like some judgments were made maybe in the past on the morality of certain activities that maybe it's not my place to make those judgments, that, you know, what I might or might not do personally, I don't know that, that's, that, that it's the job of the council to sort of put that on, on establishments and, and our residents because, you know, we, we allow, we allow alcohol consumption and we allow gambling, but we're saying you can't do them at the same time. And I, I understand the concern about people with addiction, but the reality is that it would be different if no other city in the state allowed charitable gambling and we were going to be the first. But it's sort of the opposite, so it's, we're not, we're not preventing anyone with a problem from...
Well...
So, anyway, so, yes, I, I am in favor of considering it.
And, and I think that's the point. The, the question here is not, do we favor this and are we going to, or are we going to vote for it? That's not the question on the table. The question is, do we think it should be considered? And I would agree with my fellow councilmembers that it should be considered. You know, I do share, you know, you all know well enough that I'm the resident prude when it comes to a lot of these things and I'm not a fan of, you know, combining gambling and liquor at the same time. I just, in my experience, my personal experience, liquor does not make me smarter. It just doesn't. And so, that combination to me is not an ideal combination. But do I think we should consider it? Given, given the competitive makeup, given the challenge that some of these businesses that we value face, I think it's worthy of consideration. But I'm not saying I'm going to vote for it and I'm not asking anybody here to say that because that's not the question before us. The question is, should we consider it? I think we should and I think we should have a debate and I think we should hear from residents and have their perspectives and then, and then vote and, and decide as a council whether we want to join the rest of our neighboring communities or if we want to be a standalone because our standards are different than theirs and, and we're comfortable with that. So, but the question is, should we consider it? I think we're unanimous in that. Anything else? So, then if there is agreement, do we have any feedback that we want to provide on residents, any of these other factors? Residency requirements, charitable fund percentages, trade area requirement, investigative fee, regulatory tax? Is there, are there any cities on this chart that staff prepared that we think are doing it the way we want to do it? And any opinions on any of those issues? Rebecca?
I'll try to make it really quick. I mean, I think simplicity in this regard is probably the best approach, especially initially. As much as it would be great to have some money come in, it sounds like that comes with a lot of administrative burden and it goes towards a charitable end and neat focus anyway, so maybe let the people that are doing that do that. That's my inclination. I, I can appreciate the trade area requirement. I, it's a challenge because a lot of this is really school district based, but I, I think it makes sense to have some kind of requirement. And then I would defer to staff really on the fees, what they think makes the most sense because you'd have, you have a better, you'll have a better sense of what, how, how in, intensive this process is going to be.
Kizzy?
For me, I was thinking that the business should be located in Minnetoka. Residency requirements, far as, I guess, I think it was the business, right? The business or the...
It's the charitable organization.
Okay, so the charitable organization should be located in Minnetoka. And then as far as the fees, I think the mayor used to say this, don't break the bank. And so, I'm thinking about like, because it's going to be new and the businesses has to see like, you know, what type of profit that, that they will bring in. I would just say like, yes, you know, there should be a percentage, but not to the point where if it's new for them, then they have to also see like what type of income is bringing in and so, not to break the bank for them as well. Keep that in consideration and maybe if it's doing well, maybe reevaluate it as time go on, maybe in a, a year or so, just to see how, how it's doing for them. And then as far as the other fees, the 3% fee I thought would be fine. And that was pretty much kind of my thought process on most of them.
Other comments? Paula?
Yeah, I'm a little bit unsure about the, the location requirement because we do have charitable organizations that are located just outside or in Wayzata, you know, whether it's food shelves or IOCP who might want to, so I think maybe the trade area might be the more appropriate thing for that. So, I would maybe want to look at that. That's not a big thing right now, but I think the trade area might be the more important thing to, to kind of be looking at. And then again, I agree that leaving staff to kind of look at the determination, make the preliminary determination as to whether we impose a local tax, whether that's worth the hassle and the staff time that would take to implement and also the, you know, the 10% net profits going to the city for some of our projects alongside, even though that doesn't make up staff time, you know, kind of in some ways helps direct some funding to some city projects that were kind of interesting in the list of projects that were provided.
Other comments? Kimberly?
I thought that the Bloomington example looks like a pretty good one to follow. I believe they settled on 7% of the, of the profits coming to the city.
Kimberly, I can hardly hear you, which means that the, that the report probably came together.
Okay. Can you hear me now? All right.
Yes.
Okay, so I was just saying I thought the Bloomington example was a, a pretty good one to follow and that they had... and that they had settled on seven percent for the, the amount coming back to the city. Um, I don't recall whether they did the, the tax or not. They didn't, okay. And so again, I would also defer to staff on that if they think that's too much of a hassle.
I think they used to, but they got rid of it.
Got rid of it because it was too, too, too difficult. So, um, and so correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm thinking that as far as staff time, the tax was more of a hassle than just the.
Right.
Okay. Um, and yeah, I would also like the, the, the charities to be in or near Minnetonka. I guess that could be up to, up for discussion, whether it has to be strictly within the Minnetonka borders and a, and a reasonable trade area that includes our school districts, which does get to be a large area. Um, and yeah, that's, that's it.
Very good. Any other comments? Patsy?
Um, I do like the, I mean, it seems to me that the organizations and the charitable, I mean, the charitable fund organizations and the hosts are pretty upfront and transparent about their, um, you know, what they see will happen. So I feel like, and especially the charitable organizations, sounds like they've been doing this for a while. So like not to reinvent the wheel, kind of leave it up to them and their expertise. But I also really like the idea, I mean, and I don't know, it's up to 10% charitable fund contribution rate? I would like to see that 10% and not, and, um, and not five.
All right. Kizzy?
Yeah, I was gonna say too, um, cause I didn't mention the charitable, uh, percentage. So yeah, I'm for the 10%. And then also, um, not, I didn't really take into consideration, um, the school districts because we have, um, schools in different districts. Um, so I guess that would fall up under the trade as well. Um, because it's gonna be important that we make sure that, um, if we do, do the gambling ordinance or whatever, that we do support the school systems. And I'm thinking, um, especially, um, schools that's in lower, um, communities like Hopkins School District. So I just want to make sure that we are able to, um, do something like that as well.
Very good. Anything else?
Yeah, I was thinking that too, Kizzy.
So I'll just throw out a couple of comments. I mean, I think we should charge the $250 investigative fee. I mean, that's basically kind of cost. Um, and, and we want to do a thorough investigation. Um, you know, I'm, I'm good with the 10%. Um, the one thought that I had is, you know, obviously the simpler we can make this, the better. And so, you know, when you kick off, you know, the charities are not gonna know how much money, um, you know, or the, the establishment, whoever charging the 10, 10% to is not gonna know. But I think if we, when they fill out their application, you say, well, what's your anticipated revenue? And they give us a number. Let's say, they say it's gonna be $50,000. Okay, 10% is $5,000. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bill you that at the end of the year. Um, and then at the start of the new year, you tell us what it was and you do a reconciliation and boom, it's done. And then you say, okay, and based on what you did last year, we're gonna assume that for next year. And, you know, just keep it as simple as possible. Because I think the charities will, and the operators will know what's coming in the front door and, um, and, and whether they met their projections or not. And I think that's, that's simple and shouldn't dissuade anyone from, you know, making it overly burdensome. It's not pay every month, it's whatever, you know, you, um, you just say you owe it at the end of the year and boom, off you go and, um, and let's reconcile once a year. And I think that, that's pretty simple. Um, you know, I think that, um, I, I like the idea of having our trade area be, uh, the school districts that fall within the city of Minnetonka. So we know that the, that the three are Hopkins, Wayzata and Minnetonka. But, you know, do we have any students, I mean, not, not open enrolled, but is there any, is there any part of Minnetonka that goes to Eden Prairie Schools? Or, uh, because if there, if there were, then okay, let's include those. Let's have a, let's have a bigger, let's have the trade area effect, you know.
Let me, let me come back to you on that.
A geography, you know, and if it, if, if our Minnetonka residents who goes to school in their school district, um, um, let's just include all those school districts in our trade area. And that's a pretty broad trade area, but I'm, I'm saying some nervousness from this. Pardon me?
For, for clarification.
Yep.
The city is not required to set a trade area.
Okay.
But if it sets a trade area, it must include every city that is contiguous to the city.
All right.
So.
That's good then, yeah.
Every city that touches Minnetonka will have to be included in that and you can make it larger.
And we have nine.
And you, and that's the point about the school districts because the, you can make it larger than your adjacent.
And, and I mean.
I just wanna finish the thought. There is another school district in Minnetonka for the Bren Road School.
Right.
So I think we should probably just take a peek at where those, that jurisdiction lies and then maybe just.
Overlay that.
Corinne and then.
Well, actually, what I'd really be interested in the staff recommendation on that. I mean, I think, I think the trade area thing can get complex and confusing. And I would say, okay, staff, if you think that's a bad idea, then tell us that. And I think we can.
We can do that.
We can handle that.
I mean, the, the other thing that I'm thinking is, for instance, our homelessness program is run by a nonprofit, which is technically not operated out of Minnetonka specifically, but serves residents of Minnetonka. So just thinking about things like that, you know, that's why I'm thinking the trade area gets very complicated. But I want to make sure that personally, that, that residents of Minnetonka and, um, their young people are, uh, served. So, um, but, you know, uh, I'm, I'm grateful for Corinne's, um, explanation of the trade area. That was very helpful. And I also think we should keep it simple. And I also, um, am thinking 10% and, you know, the investigative fee.
All right.
Can I just make one quick comment about the 10%? Cause I don't, my concern is that makes it way less simple. But so, so hearing that people want to do the 10%, we have to define what that's gonna be and have it be perpetual. I don't think we want to be in a position where we're deciding in December every year where we're gonna spend our 10% in the following year as a council. Cause I just worry that that.
Right, yeah, my.
Wouldn't it be just a budget function, Mike? Just like we normally would go through the budget, we would.
It'd be a budget function. And I think a couple of things, just on how the money's collected. My understanding of it is that for, for any of the establishments, so if you approve this ordinance, it's at some point, any of the establishments that decide to operate a gambling out of their establishment, they have to fill out their paperwork every year. So, and that has to get to the state of Minnesota. So the paperwork's already in place. How that money comes to the city is just, it's a number based off of their profit and loss. So there isn't any calculations made by the city. The establishment simply just do their profit and loss reporting to the state. They look at what their net profit is, take 10% of that and send the city a check. So there's, there isn't really anything in terms of the city having to crunch numbers, spreadsheets. That's all done by the establishment. So it's pretty, whether you do zero, 5% or 10%, doesn't change anything on the city's behalf. It's really the onus on the, uh, on the, on the entities that have the, the permit to submit the paperwork to the city.
But we're very limited on what we can use that money for.
Correct. And then to that point of the question, so then whatever monies come, so you do decide on a percentage, 5% or 10%. Those monies that come to the city, then you as a council can decide where to put that. And that would be just during the budget process, whether you decide to allocate it towards, we have some needs. So either whether it's in police, fire, uh, recreation, natural resources, you as a council can decide how to use those funds.
But it's so limited on what we can use.
And homelessness.
Yeah.
Well, I'll say, we don't have to decide that now.
We don't have to decide that tonight, correct?
So, and given, in the interest of time, I think we'll move on.
Uh, just one, I have two questions for the council. Uh, one is how quickly? That was one question. I'm gonna propose like a May introduction, if that's acceptable.
All right.
About right. Um, two, how much more public input? We've been doing a lot of talking with charitable organizations. We've been talking to a lot of restaurant owners. Um, not sure how big you want to go with public involvement. Um, I think it's hard to explain to people. So I'm, I'm gonna maybe recommend that you not do any more public outreach like a Minnetonka Matters just because, um, I'm not sure people will understand what you're doing because I think people think it's already here. Um, not, if they visit restaurants here, they know it's not here. But you know what I'm saying? It's like, what, don't they have it? You know, that kind of thing, kind of confusion. But it's up to you how you want to handle that. So that's the second question. So May intro is what I would do and then public involvement.
So it would be introed in May and then, um, I mean, is there any public, I mean, is there a public hearing involved? Is it, uh, it doesn't go to the planning commission, it would just come back to us? So it'd be introduced one week and, and come back, you know, a month later or whatever?
Yeah, and you can take input at the May meeting of intro and when you consider adoption, yes.
Okay.
Would you rather opt for that, just taking hearing testimony or just?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's appropriate. I mean, I think, I think we want to publicize it a little bit to let people know it's coming. But I really think it's the interest, interested parties that are gonna want to talk to us. So it's the, it's the charities who would be supportive of this and the, and the businesses. Uh, but we should let our residents know so that if they want to weigh in, they can.
Oh, like a news item maybe?
Yeah, maybe a news item or a mention, you know, either on our website or in a, you know, uh, an email or, um, or in the Minnetonka memo we could, but Minnetonka is probably not ideal.
Time for the memo.
Yeah, okay, so that's fine.
That's why I didn't go there.
Okay, that's fine.
But the website or the news item might.
Yeah, we can plus.
That's easy.
We could plus something out. And then, um, I would think that, um, you know, and, and we typically don't take public comment on introductions. We do it when we're considering it. So we, we take public comment on the second meeting, correct?
We can do it at either time. So if you want to do it, I mean, I think you could do it either or so that you give people two choices.
All right, that's fine.
Do you want to do that?
We don't have, we don't have to even decide that right now. May is, May is quite a ways away yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Sorry to belabor.
Any, anything else? All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would just, I just wanna, I just wanna say that as per the percentage of charitable, the, the 10%, I am convincedable. Um, if people have other opinions, so I just wanted to clarify my view on that.
I don't think we've made any decisions tonight and I think they will be discussed when it comes forward in a, in a regular meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So that brings us to, um, item B, um, which is director budget presentations. And Mike, you've got that, um, item.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Before we get going, just a quick question on timing. So we, uh, the idea is for the next remaining portion of tonight's study session, uh, we broke up our director presentation. So we'll have our non-public safety directors, um, present first, and there are six of those. Uh, we present those alphabetically. Uh, six directors at about 10 minutes each is about an hour. So I just want, you want to take a quick break now, Mayor and Council? Or do you want to strap in for the next hour?
Yeah, let's take a break in an hour.
Yeah, let's take a break in an hour. I'm gonna grab another water, but we, people can, let's get started and, uh.
Okay.
I'm gonna quick grab a water.
I'll do a quick intro while people get situated. And again, thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we do, as I mentioned, have our eight directors here, uh, with us this evening. In May, or the May study session, we do have scheduled the kickoff to our 2025 budget. And as we've done the last couple of years, we've asked directors to come in and give you really just a quick snapshot of what's happened in each of their departments. Uh, you'll see in the budget presentations here that, I'm sorry, in the department presentations, each of the departments have touched on their organizational chart, their staffing, just kind of giving you again, an update on where they are with staffing, highlights from 2023. Uh, they'll also talk about departmental challenges. I think it's important for all of you to know just some of the challenges they're facing. And then a look ahead at 2025 potential goals and some new innovations and, um, on the horizon. So it's really kind of setting the stage for that May study session. As again, it's, it's information for you as we start to embark upon our budget process for the next nine months, as you know is what it takes, uh, to pull our budget together. So with that, Brad and Council, um, really would kick it over to, I think, Miranda Domon, our Assistant City Manager. We'll start with admin first and then we'll work our way through our department.
Ms. Domon? Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm the Assistant City Manager slash Director of Admin Services. So we're both hats. So I do oversee administrative some department. We have, uh, four divisions and we technically call ourselves five divisions because the City Manager Division is Mike, myself, Jason, Sarissa. So this is small, so on every slide I do have a photo of each of the divisions, uh, as well. So 2023 department highlights. I tried really hard to condense this, but I have five very unique divisions. So I tried my best, but it is pretty lengthy. Um, there's our HR team in the corner. So Minnetonka Matters, ongoing success and community engagement via social media. We've really advanced our Minnetonka Matters platform as well as all of, all of our social media platforms. We are one of, uh, the highest engagement rates on social media of all of our peer cities. Um, that, that'll also be in the challenges because that causes other challenges as well. Um, and our communications manager will be coming shortly to the, uh, regular meeting very soon here to talk more about our analytics. Um, further implementation of our ERP HCM software. I'm really want Mr. Nelson to talk more about that one, but it is a joint effort between, uh, HR and finance. The implementation of the agenda management software, which was hosted by Sarissa Falk, which has been a huge improvement for our processes, the timeliness of our packets, it's been a great improvement organizational wide. Um, continued support for internal equity committee and external relationship building has been really big, um, in our department 2023. The establishment, thanks to the council, of the DEI Commission ordinance. Uh, we created a non-union compensation plan, which was a really hefty lift. And we were able to complete that and it rolled out here in January. The implementation of E S S T policy, so that was a state mandated earned, sick and safe time policy. So we did, um, work through that with our seasonal employees as well as all of our full-time, regular part-time and were able to roll that out successfully. Um, we had successful contract negotiations with Local 49 and Police Sergeants. They worked, we have great working relationships with our unions. We have really good, smooth negotiation processes, uh, with both those groups. So very grateful to be wrapped those up. Um, and those have been approved through council as well. Um, we did a refresh of our employee badges, which you all are wearing our new ones. We refreshed those. And then technology advancements at Ridgefield Commons and then of course, the Marsh were big successes for us too. On top of all of this, we're, we have 28 employees in admin. We hired six full-time employees last year. So we hired some big positions, like our HR manager is new. Uh, she came from the city of Chaska, our senior DEI coordinator, and then four others within that department. The city clerk division's here on the right. I realized after I did this that it's like they're my challenge, but they're not. I just had pictures of them all throughout the, the slides. That's our city clerk division as well as our front desk staff in that photo. So our challenges, um, I have a presentation here. For 2023 and 2024, rising costs, I think every one of our directors can say that. The rising costs have been, created some heartaches on us. Print and postage, we see the increase of our, um, Minnetonka memo just skyrocketing, but we know it's our most used source of information in Minnetonka, but it is expensive. Healthcare has been a huge, a huge cost on us. Technology, and then of course, the general cost of elections have increased. For all of those, we did bring those part of our budgeting processes for 2024 and did increase those. Particularly having five elections this year isn't helping our budget by any means. But, um, we are, we have budgeted for those. So like I mentioned before, the growth of, the growth of social media commentary directed at city, which must be monitored and created more frequently. So we are constantly watching, whenever we post something on social media, we are constantly watching the comments. And we generally don't do much about them unless it gets to a certain level. But we've, we've got some trolls on there that like to follow us and we just have to watch that very carefully. Um, prioritizing daily internal customer needs and new innovations. So admin and finance both serve our internal customers. So our employees are our customers. And so making sure that when an issue arises in their world, we can drop and go and help them, right? Or if they have a new idea they want to implement, we want to partner with them and make sure we can make that happen for them. And then of course, we have projects too on our plates. Um, technology access delivery plus security and cybersecurity. So with that, cybersecurity is huge on our plate and making sure that we get the education our employees need. It's a challenge for us, making sure we can get the technology requested and of course, the advanced technology. We have a hybrid workplace and ensuring too, that when our employees can go back and forth effectively too. Um, this is a really big one and I know Minnetonka's not alone in the next one, but it's that increase in data practice request and the quantity of data requested. We don't get reimbursed very high dollars for all of the work that goes into data practices and it impacts our entire organization. When there's a huge data request, every single department is spending time pulling emails and data. And then it's also that time redacting data as well. And they've been ramping up the last few years and it's only really getting worse. And then administering elections in a highly contentious political environment. I don't know how. I don't know how many times I hear a city clerk saying, I'm just here to administer elections. I have no skin in the game. Really trying to play that neutral party on both our municipal elections as well as our non-municipal elections. Recruitment and retention is tough. I think that's, you know, that's, we're not alone in that either. And it goes across all the departments is our recruitment and retention. We're doing all the things we can to make sure that we stay the employer of choice in keeping our employees. But it is tough, making sure policies are in alignment, our healthcare options are right. So lots of look at what we can do to continue to be an employer of choice. And then the polling place, this is for 2024 especially, was polling places for special elections, which we did bring that resolution forward to move our locations here into City Hall for the special elections. But those are lots of challenges we had last year and continue to have this year. 2025, again, our IT teams, I'm going to move the picture. Our IT teams are over here. They service our entire organization. I don't know how they get to everywhere all the time, but they're just a really great team. Recruitment and retention, again, is a challenge for us going into next year. I don't think we're going to see the end of that for a while. And just really staying competitive with our, with our flexible hours, our benefits, making sure our employees feel valued here and ensure they stay engaged to want to stay here. Making sure our culture, our culture stays the right temperature. So a couple of other things I put here was embracing technology disruptions. And I put disruptions because I feel like it's throwing us off kilter. Things like AI. We've got some younger generations here who are really, who have only ever really known AI. And then there's those of us who it scares us. So it's really balancing that, right? It's how do you balance the AIs in the world of government and making sure that we stay authentic as well? And then, of course, the, the advanced use of analytics. We have lots of dashboards. We have lots of really cool things. And just making sure that we can stay cutting edge and then support it on the IT cybersecurity side as well. Adapting to a gig economy. So what that is and what I learned when I was talking to my managers about this was really this use of freelancers because of the flexibility that everybody wants. People are going to more freelance work and making sure that we can stay competitive against all of this freelance work that's happening around us. That was supposed to be a next bullet point. So again, a challenge going into next year is our rising cost of medical care and technology. And just making sure with all the requests that is needed, that we can stay within a manageable budget too. Again, data practices, a lot of the same things here. We continue to see that volume increase and the quantity of data increasing. And again, that's, that is citywide request. It impacts every one of our directors and staff. Cybersecurity remains to be front and center. The pace of digital technologies and how we deliver them. What, when we went, really with COVID drove this need for how we deliver things. So if we have a speaker coming to City Hall, we also know that that day that people may be working remote. And so the increase in things that we want recorded, the increase in things that we want recorded and saved later. Every time something's recorded, it pulls our IT staff. And so I actually asked them to run a number, and it was quite astonishing of how much we recorded pre-COVID to how we, how much we record post-COVID. And it's pulling one to two bodies every time that happens. So really watching is, we want to be able to provide information every single way we can in the time and space that it works best for our employees. And also balancing what that does to our employees on the admin side and making sure we continue to balance that. And then again, the growth of communication channels, videos and graphics internally and externally. There's been this huge shift in our social media. Andrew can speak to this more, is the need for videos and graphics to grab that attention. People aren't reading paragraphs anymore. It's what the video and the graphics, it catches their attention, they're going to pay attention. So really that need has increased to creating more videos, being creative, needing more graphics. And that, that change in the way we do social media as well as a challenge going forward. Our small but mighty communications and marketing team there, we have three full-time and then the one is just part-time. So 2025 Goals and New Innovations. Talent management and development, making sure we really focus on our internal employees and developing them. Enhancing employee experience and our wellness to ensure that our medical costs can hopefully stay a little bit lower. Continued collaboration with Finance and our ERP HCM software. Strengthening the Minnetoka branding. Who are we? And how can we strengthen that to make sure that we are one, a city of choice and an employer of choice? Record management is nobody's favorite, but it really needs to become a forefront because of the data practices. We just really need to work on that next year. And we have, we're always working on it, but next year it's really going to be a huge focus of part of our city clerk team. Efficiently execution of our municipal election. Again, we use rate choice voting. And this is that shifting from one to another that we work through. IT will be reviewing the city's business fiber networks. Continued focused efforts of our Internal Equity Committee and our External DEI initiatives. I'm thinking more of the commission and how we interlink maybe those and do some things together. Prioritizing technology security enhancements, and then again, striving to be that employer of choice. And that's it. And then the City Management Team is four of us. It's Jay, Sarissa, myself and Mike. And the amount of work that Sarissa and Jayce produce is quite astonishing. So this is our small, mighty little division as well. So any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Miranda. Questions from Miranda? A lot going on in administration.
Impressive.
Can you keep smiling every day too?
We make it through.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't see any questions. Did I miss any?
No.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll start Julie.
There we go. I have pictures here too on the first page. I, I, org charts drive me crazy, so I don't. I'd rather talk about who works here than an org chart, but mainly, oh, there, sorry. I had to click it back. Oh, okay.
You're good now.
Stop moving. We basically have four managers in our division. So it's Lauren, Susan, Dale, who's building official, and then Alicia, and I'm mentioning them by first name because you've seen all of them at different meetings. So you know them and you know what they do and they, kind of their areas of responsibilities. So I'm not going to spend too much time there. In the Planning Division, there were about 103 cases this year. Highlights, I would say Marsh Run Two took a lot of time, a lot of public outreach with that development. Mid Country Bank, which, by the way, will start soon. Permits pending, I should say. Ridgewood Ponds, the Walls are Key, of course, took time. There were various concept plans that you've looked at over the years, a year or so. It took a lot of staff time as well as Planning Commission, City Council to do those reviews. And sustainability, obviously, the Climate Action Plan coming to fruition was a huge lift this year. Ambassador events that the commissioners participate in. By the way, the staff kind of aligns all of that, makes sure the signups happen so that there's at least a couple of Sustainability Commission members at each event. There were 10 events that they participated in this past year. And then the Minimize Program, and that's not spelled wrong, that's the way the program is spelled, Minimize. Min-M-N. Minimize your waste and energy for businesses. If you don't know what they did there, they took basically a half a day. Sustainability staff and the Minimize Program people from the county went out and just kind of saturated a business area and tried to get people to sign up for waste and energy reduction. And it was kind of a cool idea. Sustainability Commission was hoping for more people to sign up. So they were a little disappointed with the end result, but it was a really good kind of exposure for a lot of the businesses who maybe hadn't taken the time or heard anything about these efforts. So that was kind of a neat, exciting opportunity. They also had eight commission workshop meetings. They also did a lot of educational opportunities, like our visit to the recycling center last week or the week before. And that was kind of an eye-opening experience. I do recycle better since I went on the tour. And I think a lot of the people that participated do as well. In the Housing Economic Development Area, obviously, the Baker Road stuff is moving ahead. The rental assistance that we're providing is always a lot of work and making sure there's money at ICA to do that assistance. Rental registry, I'll show you a picture in a minute of where we're at with that. Loan programs, Cedar Hills reinvestment and then some grant writing. In the Environmental Health, we talked about this. We inspect about 675 facilities. And that includes Wayzata as well. So we still do Wayzata's inspections for health, if you didn't remember that. And then we did, it's a very big uptick this year on investigations. We had 73 foodborne investigations this year. That's probably double what we normally see. The inspectors think it has something to do with COVID. Everybody's really uptight, doing things really well, hand washing, temperature control. All of those things were high priority and we're slipping back down. So we've been getting some complaints on foodborne illness. So 73 is a lot in one year. We handled about 40, 437 nuisances. That actually is a little bit lower. I'm happy about that number. That means people are complaining less. So either they're just okay with their neighbors or they're not telling us about it. So I'm not sure exactly what that's telling me. On building side, 8,300 permits were issued. We're down in total value, but the number of permits is, is actually pretty consistent across. So sometimes your value is as high as 350, sometimes, probably a sweet spot is about 230, 250. That's about where we want to see the permit. So we're a little bit low, but it's because we've had this kind of amazing market in the apartment and that, that value has come online over the last five years. So that number did not surprise me. Commercial permitting actually is really steady, which is very surprising to me, but it's very steady year over year, very much the same. We only had 25 new homes this year. I think a lot of people think we build a lot of new homes. We actually don't. There's 40 on, on a regular basis, 25 were built this year. This is the, the most surprising number, $75 million in remodeling. It's the highest number. I said five years here. I actually look back 20 years. I cannot find a higher number than that. So people are reinvesting in their homes huge. Let's see, 70 licenses were issued and then 73 liquor licenses. Reports prepared. We do about four reports a week for you guys. Planning Commission, Sustainability Commissioner, EDAC. And we have about 70 meetings we attend throughout the year. The number on the very bottom right, I want to put your eyeball to. This is what Miranda was talking to, social media and kind of people paying attention. You have 39,253 people signed up to look at project updates. I'm like, what? How did that happen? I asked them to rerun the number because I'm like, there's something wrong with the number. But it's doubled from last year, 15,000. So what's happening is people are really, really paying attention to, and this is the development project page. So anything that's a project, this is how many people you have watching it or signed up to watch it. So. There's a reason like four or five.
75% of Minnetoka.
But don't, those aren't all unique users though. Don't be misunderstanding that data. So it's not 35, 35,000 users or 39,000 users. They can sign up for like three projects at a time.
But it did bump up a little bit between 2022 and 2023 and even 2021.
Absolutely. So this goes to her point about people are paying attention much more online. The other thing is, we sweat when we post things. I mean, people are looking at it, proofreading it one, two, three, four times before something's produced. Communications is giving us feedback. So it takes a lot of time to do this because you know how many people are watching what's being posted. So you're very careful, so. Let's see, go to the next slide. I have three minutes left, sorry.
Julie, sorry to interrupt you. I was just saying, Council, with a lot of the statistics that you're seeing here, these do show up in your budget documents. So as we get into the budget and more presentations on the budget, we have so much data. And so you'll see a lot of these stats show up in our budget documents as well. And in our performance metrics and our strategic profile. So we track all this data.
That's because Paula is the new council member and you know she wants the facts.
She wants the facts. Here they are.
How about data?
I'll go quickly.
Like I never ask for data?
Yes, you do. Kimberly too.
Excuse me, Kimberly.
Challenges in 2023, 24, really staffing. We have three open positions right now. That's really causing some heartburn. We've got a, a planning position open, a, the Aconite Development position, as well as just learned we lost our electrical inspector to the state. So now we're on the search for an electrical inspector. You know, our development issues have been really complex this year. It's been difficult sites. So, you know, that's been challenging for all of you. Getting rental registry out the ground and kind of licensing, you know, there was a lot of discussion about what the right answer was there. So that took some time. And then Zone Co., which is our consultant who does all the research about zoning, kind of working through that was a, a challenge because it was a lot of time and energy spent on the research. You haven't seen it yet, but it was a lot of time that we spent last year. Looking ahead in 25, really that volatility of interest rates is really impacting what's getting built. Project timing is really off. Commercial reinvestments, real estate issues with office buildings, that were kind of, that's top of mind as we think forward. Same thing as Miranda's staffing, retention. Also legislation, the stuff that's going on right now, what's the outcome of that? What's going to happen for next year? How is that going to change things? And then implementation of Zone Co.'s work as well as the Climate Action Plan. There's so many things in that document that we have to implement. So there's a lot of to-do lists, if you will. And then just on the side, there's a metro transit contract that we need to deal with. And so that with light rail and we're doing a, just a transit kind of evaluation document for you so that you can understand that a little bit better. So working on that going forward is going to be a little bit of a challenge. Some of the Goals and New Innovations, I think, you can see the registry right off to your right there. That's our new registry dashboard. So all those little dots are people that either rent a home, a building with multiple units in it or whatever. We're at 132 right now. That's actually a pretty good number. We launched it in February. It's now March. So in a month, 132 people have filed their rental license, or rental registry, excuse me. Continuing our multi-unit housing outreach, that's a lot of time-consuming effort. It's police, it's fire, it's, who else do we have involved? I can't remember, Rachel. We always go with a group. A lot of us go. And we go out to buildings. We talk about all our services. We talk about programs and help and anything that's going on in the building, kinds of calls for service. Maybe police is getting, maybe what fire is getting. And then we kind of coalesce and try to kind of really just group together to problem solve some of the issues. That does take a lot of our time and I expect that will continue in the next year ahead. Twin Home Project getting built on Baker World, that'll take some time this year, getting out and doing the business survey. As well as continuing our reach to homeowners associations about improvements they may need and, and the requests that you will see as home, housing improvement areas. So I hope I met my time. Thanks.
Nice job. Who's next? Finance.
I am next.
I heard there aren't any pictures on this one.
Yeah, contrary to what you've seen from the last two presentations, good evening, Mayor and Council. In our, in our template, we did not see any pictures. And so Finance Director did not include any pictures in his presentation for tonight. So I don't know.
Just being very fiscally prudent and we, and we appreciate that. You're modeling, you're modeling good behavior.
Right, right. Anyway, I'll get, I'll get started on this and get, and get through it so we can move on to the, the more exciting departments on that end of it. But Finance Department, we've made, made up of two divisions. We have an assessing division and then the accounting or finance side of things on, on that end of it. On the City Assessor side of it, we obviously have our City Assessor, Mel Putts, that you saw a couple of weeks ago at the, when she presented the assessment report for last year. And then we have three commercial residential appraisers or their official title is principal appraisers on that end of it. They're all moved up from residential appraisers to principal appraisers. Then we have one commercial appraiser. And then we hire a couple interns in the summertime to help with our quintile inspections when we're out about inspecting homes out on that end of it and such. Then on the finance side of it, we're made up of five of us. I got two supervisors, my Assistant Finance Director and the Accounting Coordinator. And then we have a accounts payable specialist. And then we have two utility billing clerks on the utility billing side of it, actually 1.6. One is a part-time employee on that end of it. So between the 13 of us and then I have a senior accountant as well. So between the 13 of us, that makes up our Finance Department. So some highlights from 2013. Absolutely, one of our key highlights was Mel Putts moving into our City Assessor role. She took over that position in January of last year. And then along with that, we had some new, she had about three new staff on her, on her team as well too. So we hired two appraisers, one appraiser and assessing specialist in late 2022. And then we had a commercial appraiser that we hired in January of 23. So she was dealing with a new position along with some new staff on her end of it as well too. So. And then with that became, her first assessment report came into being for 2023. The, our 2020, approval of the 2024 assessment report effective January 1, 2024. So they worked on that whole assessment for So they worked on that whole assessment for the year and got that submitted, which was not easy, but she was, did a great job and got that submitted successfully. And then catching up from Covid as well too, in our commercial side of it with our tax court petitions. We had, in twenty twenty-three, we cleared two years' worth of court petitions that were backlogged due to Covid scheduling orders and things like that on that end of it. So we had a new commercial appraiser. Mel was doing some commercial appraising as well. And so we were able to clear out those petitions, two years in, in one year there. So with new staff and new roles, it was a pretty successful year on that end of it. And then this last year, in twenty twenty-three, was our fortieth consecutive year of receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That's received from the GFOA. So that's not just a testament to the Finance Department, it's a testament to all the departments on that end of it and following through with the, the process and procedures, internal controls of our financial reporting and such like that. So forty years is a kind of a nice mile marker on that end of it and something we should be proud of on, on that side of it.
Darren, I just, speaking as someone who speaks both layman and a little bit of finance, might want to tell people what GFOA is.
Oh, absolutely. So GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association and that's our national association that has standards and guidelines for us to report our financial reports by. That is also governed by GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Lots of fun stuff there. They've been really busy over the last number of years on that end of it. There, this is GASB eighty-seven that we have to implement for twenty twenty-three. And that has to do with lease accounting. So these are our antenna leases. So if we have leases on top of water towers for cellular companies and such like that, we have to now recognize an asset and a liability or current liability on the books there as well too. So doesn't necessarily affect our bottom line revenue expenditure wise, but it adds an asset and a liability to our balance sheet and increases those types of things. So lots of work for not a lot of data there, but it's, it probably is best to show those leases as the long-term asset and long-term liability there. And then kind of the big topic that we'll probably touch on a little bit more throughout these slides is the, the Oracle ERP, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning or our finance system and then the HCM, Human Capital Management pieces that Miranda touched, touched on. We started that process just about a year ago. It took my assistant finance director's time, it's probably about ninety, ninety-five percent of his time has been dedicated to that project over the last year. So we've had to make some adjustments to help with budget and CIP and those sorts of things that he was always crucial in, in helping out on. And so we're making progress there. We're running into some hiccups along the way. We were supposed to be live initially back in August, August one to be exact on that end of it. And that came and gone a long time ago and we've had lots of deadlines that have come and gone since. And so we're, we are in a spot where we're kind of asking some questions and we're working with through Logis with this. So Logis is our consortium that we utilize a number of different applications through. So we are trying to get to a spot where we want to make this successful because I don't want to implement something that's going to be not good for a long period of time on that end of it. So we are holding firm that we want to make sure that this is a successful project and it has long-term ramifications on that. So we want to do it the right way and not just get it done to flip a switch, so. So that's what we've been working on for twenty twenty-three. Some of our challenges, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we have to also implement the GASB ninety-four. The previous slide was eighty-seven, so they made a few in between there. And that is the, ninety-four is public-private and public-public partnership. So if we have any of those types of contracts, which I believe we do with Hopkins School District for the Hopkins Activity Center, that type of thing, we'll have to recognize those long-term and liabilities and assets on the, on the books there. So we are still digging into that one. And then GASB ninety-six is subscription-based. So if we have any software where we have contracts with a vendor for over a year, we have to recognize a long-term liability and an asset there as well too, for that right to use that, that piece of, of software. So that was actually a very big project. You wouldn't, you'd be amazed at how many subscriptions we have to various software vendors across the, the whole organization on that end of it. So that was a lot of work with IT and, and finance as well, trying to discover all of those across the board. Fortunately, we kind of used a materiality basis to kind of help us out with. And a lot of these subscriptions are now basically just a year long because they want to be able to renew them and be able to increase our fees quickly on those instead of being stuck in, you know, multi-year contracts and such. So not big impacts, but we had to go through the process to actually figure out what was what on those. And then here again is ERP, HCM implementation. We'll be working on that for twenty-three and will be for the foreseeable future in twenty-four here as well. And then also the, kind of the, the citywide budget pressures and on both tax levy and utility fees as we hear, as we work through the budget process on that end of it, that kind of falls on, on me to kind of try to make that fit somehow on, on that end of it. And then as we move into twenty-five, some of the challenges there are, talking with the assessing side of things is that we are seeing a little bit of change in the commercial world, obviously with vacancy rates higher and such like that. You know, what is the, the future of those, those properties and such like that? And will there be an increase in petitions coming down the pipeline? That's what, we don't know at this point in time. We don't currently see that, but that can change as the years go on here as well too. And then with twenty twenty-five, we would hope that we would have the ERP implemented and we'd be able to start utilizing some of that, the capabilities of that and start to maximize our efficiencies on that end of it. And as you may recall, we also talked about when we did the ERP implementation that we were going to look at a utility billing software upgrade as well. And so Logis is taking that on as well. We were a pilot city for the Oracle project. I'm not going to be a pilot city for the, the utility billing system. So there are another, there is another couple cities that have, have done that. And that sounds like that project is going much better on, on that end of it. So we don't have dates yet of when we are scheduled to be in that time for an upgrade, but we will be doing that, I would assume sometime in twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe on that end of it. So our staff is looking forward to that. And then we also have probably a, a utility meter replacement project that'll be taking place as well too. So we got to kind of coordinate those two a little bit to help minimize the headaches on that end of it. And there again, it'll be the continued citywide budget pressures on, on tax levies and utility fees and such. And then just goals and innovations for twenty-five. Here, I kind of mentioned the ERP functionality that'll come with that. It'll become a revamped budgeting process for staff as well too. We won't be able to utilize our current reporting software that we currently use. And then also with the utility billing piece of that, we've also kind of, over the last couple of years, talked about moving to a monthly billing piece of that. Depending on when that conversion is, that might be something we'd be able to move up a little bit quicker and look into it. Our numbers on the number of payments that we receive electronically is really high. I think we're close to seventy, or over seventy percent right now is on what our electronic payments. And I think the billing, people that residents have received e-bills is, is like thirty, thirty-one percent on that end of it. So we moved to a different billing software a couple of years ago, I think right when Covid hit. That was a good move at that point in time and it really has made that process a little bit, a lot easier for residents to be able to pay a bill. It really looks like a normal bill from any other private company on that end of it. So it makes it a lot more user-friendly on that end of it. So we'll be continuing to keep that on our, on our horizon and see where things go there. And then we're also looking at potential partnership with Hennepin County to assist in appraisal writing. So if we see a big shift with the commercial properties and we have more petitions on the books, we do only have one commercial appraiser and our city assessor can help out on that as well too. But if we see a big shift in that, Hennepin County does have staff that's dedicated to writing, actually writing appraisals at the moment. And so we don't do a lot of full-blown appraisals because usually we get to a settlement piece before that, that time comes. But we are looking to see if we could utilize them because we do use their county attorney's office as well for these petition cases and such like that. So it might be a, a way to utilize some of the resources and, and keep some of that knowledge within both Hudson, Hennepin County and that end of it. And then just continued staff development as well with the, our assessing staff being new, keeping them growing and developing and kind of covering all the gamuts of commercial and residential appraisal along with just the finance staff. So I think that's it for me.
Any questions for Darren? Kimberly?
Just quick, I was just wondering, so did we get any sort of financial break for being a pilot with the, with the Logis? I see the eye roll, so I'm guessing no.
Pain and suffering?
No, no financial break. We kind of did it because we were going to get the benefit of having the system implementer that was going to be on board and have this expert company help us. And turns out they're the problem and not necessarily the Logis side of things. So yeah, hindsight on that one.
Anything else? No, I just wanted to comment, you know, I know that the ERP thing is, is a significant, a heavy lift. And I was, I can't even remember who I was talking, if it was today, but, or if it was Joel or Zach, but I really appreciate what I heard in terms of you holding their feet to the fire so that we get all the functionality that has been promised. Because you know, when it, when it gets painful like this, you just want to get done. But if you don't, if you're not going to get all your, your functionality, you don't want to get done. You want to, I think we're smart to hold out for it. And I know that's causing you some pain and our team some pain, but I really, I really appreciate the fact that, that we're going to, we're going to hold their feet to the fire and get it right because that's, that's what we need.
Yep, absolutely. That, and it's, the biggest part is really on the HCM side of it because our current system doesn't have the HCM piece of it. So we're really trying to build that up from the, from the ground up and really utilize, I mean, Oracle's a worldwide.
Yep.
You know, software application that should be able to do anything that we want to do and, and more on that end of it. So we really want to take advantage of what the capabilities of it are and, and have it maximize its benefit here, so.
It's not, it's not an easy road, so hang in there, keep it up.
There's a road?
We're cheering. We are on your, we are on your side. Thank, yep, thanks Darren. All right, after finance, who gets to go next? Legal, Corinne?
Seven positions unchanged from last year. Six are in the criminal division. One of the staff members in the criminal division does provide a little bit of assistance to me, the civil division, she reviews funds and insurance on contracts. We do occasionally contract with the league for a, a legal intern, but that program is operated through, in cooperation with Mitchell Hamlin. And they have not had anybody for a couple of years, so. And I don't, haven't heard any inklings that they'll have one next year. Our highlights, I, I'm going to start with the second bullet.
Corinne, I can't hear you at all.
Oh. That is because I forgot to turn my mic on. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm going to start with the second bullet in the highlights, which was reviewing all of the legislation last year. Seventy-five bills that the legislature passed and some of them hundreds of pages and a lot of legislation that impacted city operations and, and then, you know, cascaded into assisting in policy revisions like ESST, the Earn Sick and Save Time and other things. So, and, and one of those things was the, what we call ERPO, the Extreme Risk Protection Orders Statute. We have not yet had any applications for ERPOs, but we worked with the police department to develop a, an outline and a plan on how we would address it should we receive applications. And then the last, the last two things here, we, Deb, did we lose your camera? Okay. Tell us if you can't see us because we just had a little pop-up about the camera not working.
Went up to the corner of the room and now it's focused back down on the roof.
Okay, all right. So the last two items are really kind of taking care of old stuff. We, we, we assist, or our department assists all the other departments in their, you know, things that they want to move forward, reviewing contracts for projects, assisting with policies, helping with ordinances. But I like it when I can go back and clean up old stuff that wouldn't get done if I didn't go back and find it. So we had some easements for trails all throughout the Opus area and going back to the early eighties, those were supposed to have been conveyed to the city. They never, that deed never got recorded. And so for forty years, we did not have clear title to the easements that we've been maintaining. But I was able to track down a, a, a living officer of a now dissolved corporation and get a deed. And so for all the Torrance properties, we have now cleared up that problem. In the abstract properties, we have prescriptive easements, so that was good. And then the other thing was went back and updated our ADA Transition Plan, hadn't been looked at since nineteen ninety-three. So we are in the process of, we did a lot of it last year, but we'll be finishing that up this year and updating the transition plan. And then we also developed our Title VI Plan, which is a nondiscrim, nondiscrimination plan required for federal transportation projects. So got that done. Challenges, and we were told to kind of say what the challenge was and what we've done or what the status is. So we did have a, a big backlog of cases dating back to the pandemic. That backlog has eased a bit, there still is some, but it's, it's decreased. And we were having a lot of extra court appearances to address the backlog. And the court has now discontinued the special appearances requirement. So that's eased a little bit of the stress. We have seen an increased workload due to body worn camera. And so both of these challenges on the end kind of carry over to this year's challenges and, and what we're proposing or trying to do to minimize that. So we've, we've seen just a, a very large number of videos that are associated with body worn cameras that need to be reviewed and summarized for the attorneys. And then also just on the civil side, the, the pressure of, of supporting seven other departments in trying to minimize the use of outside counsel. Both of those carry over to this year where that increased workload continues. And in fact, now with the DWI enforcement officer that has been added for police, we're expecting to see, and the increased number of patrol officers, we're expecting to see continued increase in that BW, BWC demand for workload. And what we're doing for that is we're undertaking a staffing study within our department. We're talking to other departments that have prosecution in-house and civil in-house. And we're reviewing our staffing needs to determine whether and at what point we're going to need to add additional support staff to meet that demand. And so then goals and innovations, in, during this year, we will, we are collecting and analyzing data to determine the workload. And then we're hoping to complete that or get to a point by mid-year that we will be able to determine whether we need to make a budget request for additional staffing as part of the twenty twenty-five budget. And another thing that we will be doing is reviewing the, just the practices and procedures to determine what changes we might be able to make that would improve efficiency, minimize staff load without compromising public safety goals.
Thank you, Corinne. Any, any questions? Not seeing any, just, just a comment. It's like, I mean, all, all these new, new things that come along, body worn cameras, adding new trails, I mean, new trails need to be, the best analogy, trails, new trails need to be maintained. And body warm cameras, the right thing to do, but all of that data needs to be maintained. And so we add these things, we add these things, and all of a sudden, well, guess what? It's going to take an extra person to do all that work. And so those are budget pressures. So I'll turn it, but Corinne, thank you. Next, is it Kelly or Will?
It's me, I'm having trouble with the clicker.
You're good now, you're good now.
Good?
Excuse me. We're going to take a break after these two presentations and then between, between then in public safety.
I'm going to take me a break, y'all keep going.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In Public Works, we have six different divisions. We have admin, natural resources, utilities, facilities, and then we have our engineering department as well as our park and maintenance facilities, or excuse me, park and maintenance, park and street maintenance. We have 84 full-time employees, 20 to 30 seasonals. In addition to those, we have three ICWC crews. We have six to eight summer interns. We also have climate corps, green corps. Hennepin County has an office in Public Works. We have eight to 10 folks that work out of Hennepin County. And then in addition to all these other folks, we have a number of vendors, contractors, other folks that are working in the city. So in the summer, it's not uncommon, in addition to the seasonal and full-time, to have another 20 to 50 people in the city with crews and different, different folks that we're watching over. Just some of our highlights. Maintaining our core services is a big job for us. So we have our water sanitation, utility streets, stormwater facilities, and then our parks and trails. So we have 300 miles of sewer and water, 254 miles of streets, 950 water bottles, 15 facilities, 54 parks, and then 105 miles of trail that we're working on maintaining. Just to keep up with our natural resources department, they began their, their habitat restoration plan and forestry management. They also managed 4,000 volunteer hours with a number of our volunteers. We added a forestry mower, and so we maintained another 15 acres with that forestry mower, which helps us get a lot more done. And then we did control burns for a number of restoration areas. We completed our Tonka Woodcroft Minnetoka Boulevard Trail Project, which was our largest reconstruction in the city. We did the campus wayfinding signs, as you can see right out the door here. We worked on the Ridgedale Water Tower. So not only did we paint it, we have to rehab it at the same time, so we fix and do repairs on things. And as Darren mentioned, we have a number of our leases. And so prior to doing that, we have to get all those folks off of the tower in service, and then we go back and put them back on. So a lot of the stuff you don't see, that's a 2 million gallon tank, and so we take that out of service and then make sure nobody's interrupted. We secured around 5 million for Hopkins Cross Road, which you'll see is going currently, and then another 340,000 for E A B assistance. And then we're working on an asset management planning process in Public Works, so that's helping us identify costs and needs and different things in the future. Just some of our challenge, our challenges, time and workload, and there's a lot going on, as you can see, as I mentioned before, so just keeping up with everything. We're in a lot of competition, as a number of other directors mentioned, not only in competition with other cities for employees, but the private sector, construction, consultants, we cross over, cross over a lot of those folks. Costs are up, so our rise in materials projects, watershed regulations, state regulations, county, different mandates that we function under, we have to keep up with those. And then we're balancing a number of different factors when we make decisions. So another one of the things we're challenged with at times, our graphic information system, G I S, is really growing. And so there's a lot of work there and our folks are keeping up, but we're doing our best to keep that in check. A lot of those carry over to 25, so I won't repeat them. But in addition to that, talking to our engineering department, there's a number of projects coming up with Mindot in the county as well as Three Rivers over the next five years. And so those are projects that occur in the city. We don't just leave them and let them work there. We certainly have to keep track of what they're doing and work with them. Darren mentioned the meter replacement, so you'll see a council item coming up. We've got around 17,000 meters in the city. We'll be looking at replacing over the next five to six years currently. And then our last one I mentioned before, E A B, you know, not only is it the E A B, but the, the material that comes with that, so it continues to grow. Just goals and innovations, the E A B, so the, the program that we got the grant money for, Natural Resources is currently putting that together so we can work with folks. The meter replacement, it's a new technology, so get us the opportunity to, to monitor our water use a lot closer. The Excelsior Boulevard project, you've seen that in the C I P, but it's a big project. We're currently working with Hennepin County to see if we can do a road improvement project at the same time and get some funding assistance. Our city forester is working on our reuse program as well as he's looking at drone technology to do inventory on trees as well as health. And so that's another thing we're working on. Our open space and our habitat restoration in natural resources. And then, you know, our energy conservation sustainability and then climate action, like Julie mentioned before. And then this year, we're working on our R F P for our recycling and organics program that'll come due at the end of the year. So you'll see that probably in the next couple of months, it'll be something we'll be talking with you on. I think that's it.
Thanks, Will. Any questions for Will? All right, that, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of stuff. Oh, yeah, Paula, excuse me.
Just, I hope to follow up with you because I'm getting some questions about organics recycling and costs and whether we can negotiate contracts and things like that. So just how I can respond to some of those folks, we can maybe do it offline.
Yeah, I think there's been a few calls on that. I've received, I think we've all received some.
Just so we can tell them what's coming down the pike or if there's any assistance now that we can provide.
Yeah.
Especially people on fixed incomes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. O'Day.
Last but not least.
The last but not least, absolutely.
I need to take more staff pictures, that's for sure.
See, the thing is, you know, we're going to see most of these sides over again, you know, so I mean, there's, there's little inner, inner department competition, you know, so it'll be dope.
Understand. So recreation, so we have 31 FTEs, we have six different divisions. So myself is the, the director. We've got three of our larger facilities, the Marsh, Williston Center, and Ice Arena. Our administrative division is headed by our assistant director. We've got a recreation division, which is kind of a department that we joined with the city of Hopkins. And then we have our community facilities division, which oversees the community center, Grays Bay Marina, and some of our other ancillary facilities. I also was doing some quick math as Miranda was talking about how many new staff she has. Between myself and the six division managers, the tenure is almost 19 years. So we have definitely some staff members who've been here for a long time, which is comforting for sure. Highlights, I was actually going to put just the Marsh and then just kind of drop the mic and leave, but, you know what, we, we did have a lot going on in 2023. Obviously, the Marsh was one of the things, that was the biggest thing, I think. Closing on that facility in, in February, reopening, partially reopening in May, I think that was, you know, stressful, exciting, there was just a lot of different things going on with the Marsh. But overall, I think that was definitely a highlight that we had. Special event attendance, you can see the, the attendance that we had in 2023. If you think about the past probably three years, I think we've probably had a record attendance at most of these different events. It's all dependent on the weather, the borough was spooktacular, not last year, but the two years before that were busy. This year, Kids Fest, it was 55 degrees and I was directing traffic and we had, you know, almost 3,000 people. So the special event attendance has really jumped up significantly over the past few years. The Williston Center had 250,000 visits. So typically, you know, it's anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500, when you think about that in January, February, March. In the summer, it's definitely a little bit slower. But we're also very curious the effect that the Marsh would have on Williston, and, and Williston has stayed very strong. I think we were still recouping from COVID even into 20, you know, early 23 a little bit, but the numbers at Williston in 23 are really good, so we're, we're happy about that. Almost 30,000 program registrations, so people are still registering for programs, whether it's youth swim lessons, all the way up to our senior programs, very busy. Happy to report again that all of our scholarship requests and our inclusion service requests have been granted. So anybody who applied for and asked for a scholarship or needed help, needed inclusion services, we were able to, to grant those to everybody. So that's really important, we're really proud of that. And then lastly, we, we had some creative new programming. One of them I noted was the Sauna and the Parks, I believe that's the bottom right picture there, just kind of a creative fun. Yeah, we're, we're going to try to do more of those programs definitely here in the future. Some of the challenges, you know, staffing was a challenge. We're, we're kind of in limbo with the Marsh, not knowing, you know, we were kind of on that two-year plan and didn't really know the future of that. We hopefully will, will know that here soon, but we, we stole some people from Williston, we've got some interim positions, we've been creative. And so, you know, doing that has kind of taxed the staffing levels at both the Marsh and Williston Center. I think that the, the difference, when some of you might remember in 2021 and 22, we were looking for lifeguards and we were looking for seasonal staff members, and that has really rebounded well. So the seasonal staff is doing well, we're just, you know, between the Marsh and Williston, we're kind of sharing some employees, et cetera. Purchase of the Marsh was a challenge, like I said, a lot of different things. We did put the, the Ice Arena and the Community Center project on hold, and then just the reopening, that was a challenge to get that building open. And that wasn't just recreation, that was, every department had, had something to do with that. We had basically March and April to, to get that building ready and open the way we wanted it, and we're, we're happy that we did that. And lastly, I have gym space. The Minnetoka Academy, one of our events that we just had recently, we did a tour of our city facilities. We went over to Williston at night, and there was two courts fully booked with 30 people waiting to get on for pickleball. So, you know, the gym space, our softball programs, our volleyball programs are, are still growing and, and pickleball, although, you know, the private facility just opened in town, it seems like the demand is still there for pickleball. So that's been definitely a challenge for us. Looking at 2025, the community facility study, so we'll be talking to you guys at your April study session and how we implement the, the results of that. You know, we've got some older facilities, as I mentioned, the gym space, I think that'll be a, a big challenge for us. Those free community events, so the, the events that I kind of talked about a little bit, that, you know, the cost of those events is going up, the, the size of those, the more people that attend, it, it's definitely taking a toll on parking and facilities, et cetera. And so I think more people are attending those, and so we have to be creative in how we, how we do that. Williston Center, I, I talked about that managing capacity there. We have over 10,000 members at Williston right now. The Marsh, we're almost at 5,000, and we have another 1,000 members that are members of both. So those are really, really good numbers. Again, we were curious how Williston would be impacted with the purchase of the Marsh, and it's, it's increased slowly, but, but definitely been busy over there. And I think I'm probably the third or fourth person that's talked about social media and just managing all these different, you know, Instagram and Facebook and all that. And I know we've got a, a wonderful communication vision, but that also does fall in departments, including us. So that's definitely a challenge. Looking at goals and innovation, I talked about the community facility study, specialty programs like the Saunas and the Parks. I think we're getting more pressure to keep things fresh, keep things new. We've got a Jigsaw Jamboree, you know, I think we're just looking for new creative ideas to keep people focused, full, by the way, so you can't get into the Jigsaw Jamboree. But we're looking for those specialty types of programs. Over at the Marsh, it's the Pilates classes and things like that. So, third is the low and no-cost programming. Again, I've talked about that a couple of times, just how we do that, making sure that we're not taxing facilities too much. And then lastly, just enhancing the customer experience. I think we've got a pretty good customer base at our facilities and our programs, and we just want to make sure that we are enhancing their experience. We want to make sure they're having a good experience when they come to our program, when they come to our facility. One example is looking at a mobile app for our fitness, fitness facilities. So, that is it. I was told to make up some time here at the end.
All right, well, you, well, you did a good job, Kelly. Thank you. Any questions for Kelly? Paula?
First of all, great job, but especially on the Marsh. Is the mobile app, is, is that going to be for people to sign up for classes and such?
We're looking, it has that potential, yes.
Okay.
Yep, definitely. We're looking at that. It's, it's a feature that our software system allows. We're still kind of looking at it and researching it.
Got it, thanks.
Other questions, anyone? A quick comment, of course, we have the State of the City on Friday, and, and I know everybody put a lot of work into that, but particularly your team, and particularly your team at the Marsh. And I think, I think the Marsh showed itself off well, although I also think that we, you know, kind of restrained the capacity of the Marsh a little bit. But I think, you know, I think we generated a lot of excitement on that. You know, there's always a few faux pas. Mine was, you know, recognizing, I, I didn't recognize Kristen when I thanked staff, and Mary Jo did a lot of that work, I know, but, you know, you always kind of kick yourself when you, that was pointed out to be by somebody anonymously. But anyway, but I, you know, we, I, I think the Marsh really showed itself off well. I think their people were very interested and excited to be there. I think we'll probably pick up a few more memberships because we had it there. And, you know, I just think that I'm, you know, just proud of the nimbleness that we demonstrated as a city, both in terms of buying the Marsh, but also having that event there. And I think those are all positives. So I really felt that Friday was a successful day for the city. So, thank you, thank you very much to you and your team and to, to all the staff, because everyone put a pretty significant shoulder into that, so thank you. All right, we said we'd take a break. We'll take a, kind of a, a five-minute break and we'll keep on going, and then we'll get public safety and we'll be in good shape. Thank you. Miranda, are we ready to go?
This is supposed to be 45 minutes.
No, I think I did.
So, it looks like fire is up, so chief, take it away.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So the Fire Department, our organizational staffing chart here, we have three divisions within the Fire Department. The Operations Division, which is the largest division within the Fire Department, that's where the majority of our personnel, all our equipment, fire stations all fall under that. I'm kind of serving a dual role in that right now. You'll see my name's both under the Fire Chief and the Deputy Chief position, but I've been fortunate to be able to delegate some of those Deputy Chief roles and responsibilities off to some of my battalion chiefs. It kind of splits down from the Operations Division, so we have kind of a two-tiered personnel, where we have some full-time personnel, and then we have what we call paid-on-call or part-time firefighters. They do the same job, they all have the same certifications, the same training, but some of them come more on the time that they're scheduled to be here, and then the full-time are scheduled to be here more regularly, so. And then our Assistant Chief of Administration and Emergency Management is Aaron Morris, and he oversees a part-time public safety data analyst that we share with the police department. Aaron's role is primarily responsible for everything emergency management related, and he handles our development of policy SOGs, standard operating procedures. He's our grant manager for when we apply for grants. And his big project that he's just getting ready to start, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a bit, is our standards of cover that we want to be able to present to the city council. And then our third division is our Prevention Division, and that is overseen by Assistant Chief Luke Burschite, who is, serves as also the Fire Marshal, and he has two deputy fire marshals that report directly to him. Some of our 2023 department highlights is we began implementation of our Public Safety Master Plan that was first presented to the council last year. Some of the, we started tackling some of the, the low expenditure, low financial impact portions of that, where we, one of the things we did is we started staffing our Station Two during peak hours. So we used to run, when, when we were fully staffed, we would run two trucks out of here. We shifted one of those trucks from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM over to our Station Two because we've, through our, our data that's coming in, the Ridgedale area is one of our busiest areas of the city. So during those peak times, we try to keep a, a staff truck up in that area to help reduce those overall response times. We, he brought on three additional full-time firefighters, which gave us one, that gives us one per day because we run three shifts. So that firefighter is staffed down at Station, our Station One with our full-time captain. We've continued our community outreach last year. Our public educators, they did 120 events citywide with almost 4,000 attendees, and that does include our, our open house, our family fun days, our sensory-friendly open house, our, we do, our public educator, Deputy Fire Marshal, does a lot of hands-only CPR classes. She gives fire safety talks at, at senior living facilities. We started last year a smoke alarm installation program, so we receive free smoke alarms from the state, from the state Fire Marshal. And then we go out when people request, usually seniors or people that aren't, don't have the mobility or the means to change out and service their smoke alarms, we'll go out and install those in their homes for them. And we did almost 50 of those last year, so that, that continues to expand. We started revising our command staff structure. We shifted some of our battalion chiefs around a little bit. We have one battalion chief that's a training chief, and they're on a 40-hour work week. And then we have our 24-hour-a-day battalion chiefs, and we rotate them around. And so we have a new training battalion chief that will serve a two-year stint in that position. That position allows them to not only conduct and develop the That position allows them to not only conduct and develop the training within the department, they're in charge of recruitment and retention. And then one of the biggest things is, we go through this, is mentoring. It's kind of a mentoring position where we give that position opportunities to seek higher education, anything to help develop them professionally, so that when the opportunities come up, we have people ready to kind of move up into those higher positions. And then we saw a record number of calls for service last year. We ended our year at 5,727 calls for service that we handle primarily with two to three trucks every day. So very busy. Over 30% of our calls are overlapping calls, which means there's at least two calls or more going on at the same time. So when we have three trucks and our battalion chief on, we can handle three calls, depending on what the calls are. But we're stretched pretty thin. Anything past that, we have to start paging our part-time firefighters back to come in and help cover. So, and we're seeing that those numbers are going to continue to increase in the coming years. Okay, and where'd my clicker go here? There we go. So some of the challenges that we're seeing, I did mention one there, but our call volume obviously is going up, is going to continue. Inconsistent staffing amongst our paid-on-call members. So our paid-on-call, they schedule their time with us. We have minimum requirements that they have to make to remain active and in good standing with the Fire Department. But those overall numbers are pretty low on what they need to make. And we're, we sit, try to sit at around 70 paid-on-call, but currently we're down at 56 is where we're at. And we have a number of those that are on light duty, a couple that are on military leave and other types of leaves. So that puts us down into closer to 50. And with the number of shifts that we have to have covered, we find ourselves having a lot of gaps. And so there are times when we do have those gaps, that we have to pull that third truck out of service, and we have to go down to two trucks. Our aging fleet, inflation and lead time for apparatus build. So our fleet of trucks, we have quite a few of them, and they range anywhere from a year old to over 20 years old. They're all well-maintained and well-taken care of, but they are starting to age. And kind of prior to COVID, we could order a truck in January and receive that truck by December, January of the end of the year. And now we're seeing four-year build times on the trucks. And on top of that, manufacturers would typically do a price increase annually in like February. Last year, most of the manufacturers now did three price increases throughout the year. So we're trying to navigate not only those, but try to plan out when you have a four-year build time on a truck, and you're trying to replace a truck that's 20 years old, there's some logistics involved with that. So we've been working a lot on trying to streamline that and figure out the best solution for replacing our fleet. Fire station infrastructure, I'll talk a little bit more about that, too, when we get into our master plan review. But we've got four satellite fire stations and our central station. Our central station was new in 2020. And our satellite stations range from being built, our Station Two is 1974, I want to say. And our newest satellite station, which was Station Five, was built in 1991. So all of those were built with the idea of accommodating a paid-on-call Fire Department, and they weren't designed for 24-hour staffing, so they have no dormitory rooms. They have small bathrooms, very, small closet-sized kitchens, really not conducive to having somebody essentially live there for 24 hours a day. So we have engaged, and I'll talk more about that, with an architect that will begin a study on that this summer. And then our recruitment and retention, you've heard it from all the other directors. This continues to be a challenge, not only for us, but for all departments across the board. We're seeing far fewer numbers than we used to see. With the Fire Department in particular, and with us kind of having full-time and paid-on-call, it's kind of a parasitic relationship where, when we're hiring our full-time staffing, a lot of that staffing's coming from our paid-on-call, because they're ingrained in the culture, right? They know the system, they're trained, they're equipped already, so it's an easy move to get them from paid-on-call to the full-time. But now we've created gaps in the paid-on-call that we have to try to fill. And this time, we're actually just now wrapping up our recruitment process for both paid-on-call and some full-time positions that are coming up. And for the first time, we actually had more applicants for the full-time positions than we did for our paid-on-call positions. So that's going to continue to be a challenge as we move forward, because the paid-on-call for quite a while here is going to be pretty crucial to how we continue to operate. So we're going to have to continue to invest in that and find unique ways to try to encourage people to volunteer. Part of the hard part with the paid-on-call is we have a living requirement. So they, applicants have to live within 15 minutes of one of our fire stations. So that kind of limits our target area as to where we can go. 15 minutes on the solid line, it does get us pretty far, but nonetheless, it's a limiting factor in that, so. Okay, 2025 goals and innovations. We're going to continue to implement our Public Safety Master Plan. Hopefully later this year, we'll submit to the Council for adoption, Standards of Cover. That's going to help to guide us as we move forward with the, kind of the Fire Department planning on how do we want the staffing to look, how much staffing should we have? What are we going to do exactly with those fire stations? That's going to, that's going to help dictate that, so we'll be looking to get that to you later this year. Our refined equipment replacement plan, we want to get that wrapped up and get kind of a long-term plan put in place for our fleet replacement. We'll be conducting a large-scale emergency management exercise this year. Assistant Chief Aaron Morris will be conducting that with city staff, and Council will be involved. And it's not something we've done for a number of years. And it's one of those low-frequency, high-risk situations when those come about. And when the time does eventually come, that we have to fire up our Emergency Operations Center and bring people in. If nobody's done it for a while, that's not the time to try to get refreshed on it. So we want to do a large-scale exercise this year and then continue ongoing training with that, so we can keep all the city staff fresh. The fire station analysis will happen this year with Wold Architects. We've engaged with them. They're the architects that designed our central fire station. So they're going to assist us with doing an analysis on our stations to look at, you know, what's the best way that we're going to be able to get to where we need to be for accommodation of 24-hour staffing? In some cases, you know, maybe it'll just be a remodel, maybe an addition. We're not sure where that's going to go, but we'll know more later this summer. We're going to implement a new records management system this year. That was, we were kind of forced into that as our current vendor decided they were going to, they were going to sell out to another company. And then the other company just decided they're going to flip the switch on this later, probably well, early next year, and it'll no longer be a valid system. So we've been kind of forced to move, which has actually worked out pretty well for us, because the new system we're going to is going to serve us a little better. It's what a lot of the departments around us are moving to, so we have some inner, some abilities to share information now with this system. And it's going to give us a lot of more, a lot better data tracking through this. So we're going to be able to look at our trends. There's a lot with our current system that we can't pull reporting on and look at trends and kind of what's happening. So we're pulling data from different areas, and it's quite cumbersome. So this system's going to streamline that, and it gives us some live capabilities. So it will permit our crews, when they're out on a call, a live, when our county dispatch pushes the call out, this will pop up in the truck, and they will build, build live documents about the building, fire service features, things like that. We call them pre-plans, that they can work on, and then it'll stay with that building. So every time we respond, people can add to it and build upon it. And so it gives our firefighters and our crews information when they're responding to the buildings. And maybe it's a building they have not been to a long time, for a long time, they'll have all that information on hand, so. And then we're going to continue to do a broader focus on specialized skills within the Fire Department. Now that we're adding more full-time staff that are here 24 hours a day, things like specialized rescues, hazardous materials, things like that. In the past, we've kind of trained unilaterally at an operational level. But now that we have personnel that are here more regularly, and that this is their full-time job, we're going to start looking at specializing in certain areas and training some of our personnel up to either technician or specialized levels. Anything from rope rescue to confined space rescue to vehicle extrication, things like that. And that's what I have. Questions?
All right. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to, I know there's an increase in firefighters that's needed. How do you determine how many firefighters that's needed? Is it based on the amount of calls, or is it based on the amount of residents?
That's a good question. So traditionally, we've kind of had a target spot where, where, when we were primarily paid-on-call. I don't know exactly where the number came from, but it's kind of a guesstimation about. So we used to be authorized for around 80 firefighters. And it was kind of based on the guess that if we have a major incident, and this was back before we had full-time staffing, where we would call people from home, and they would, they would come in. We would figure if we need kind of 25 to 30 people for a structure fire, if we have 80 part-time paid-on-call on the books, when a big fire comes out, we're hoping that 25 of the 80 are available to come in. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. That's why we have, we run mutual aid with our neighbors. But now, once we had our study done last year, and we'll continue to refine that as we move forward, the data shows now kind of what is, what's called the, it's called the effective response force. And it shows what is needed to handle certain incidents. So it says, for instance, on a major fire or a multi-patient incident, you need, say, it's 12 to 19 firefighters have to be there within a certain amount of time, 90% of the time. So now that we have those numbers coming through, that kind of helps dictate what we need for personnel.
I have one more question. I can't remember, like, how many firefighters did we hire for last year for 2025?
We hired three last year.
Three, and so then you're asking for nine more for 2025?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, it would be interesting to know, like, if there's like a concrete number, because I know that we're increasing in calls, and I'm also thinking about how, I know we've been increasing over time in residents, too, but like, I was telling Mike, like, wow, it seems like a lot. And I was just thinking, like, when is it going to be at a stopping point? Or is it going to constantly continue to grow up? Because I'm thinking if it's going to continue to grow up, what is the expectation of, of how many firefighters are you thinking you're going to need? Can you estimate that?
Yeah, so the study that we had done last year recommended a total of 21 to get us to a point where we can meet our effective response force and meet our response time. So with a lot of these calls, whether it's one unit or the, or the larger calls that require more units, it's, it says that you need to have the first-arriving truck, for instance, on a medical or a small incident, needs to be there within eight and a half minutes of the time that the 911 call is received. And so with the addition of these personnel, and our overall goal is to staff the stations to a point that we can get as close to that response time as possible. And so they're saying 21, that's the bare minimum we need to build to start making those numbers. And that's one of the things the City Council's going to be asked to adopt in that Standards of Cover, is that the realistic goal that you want? You know, you're going to, you're going to be able to kind of dictate, what is that level of response that we want?
Thank you.
I assume within that we'll have kind of like what our peer cities are doing?
Yeah.
When we get that, okay. And also, could you just answer a question? First of all, a great study and, you know, well-done for, you know, looking at that and analyzing it and seeing that what we need to do. I noticed that an overwhelming number of our calls now seem to be medical-related. So I saw that less than, well, basically just a little more than one per month fire. So my question is regarding health calls, medical calls. Are engines going out for those, or are there other vehicles that are going out for those?
In some cases, many cases, yes, an engine goes out. In some cases, we have a smaller rescue truck that handles them, but that's if that truck is staffed at the moment. And, you know, we get that question a lot, and the easiest explanation is we have to keep the firefighters with the tools and equipment for when the low-frequency, high-risk calls come out, which is our structure fires, because they're out almost all day. You know, at 5,700 calls a year, they're not in quarters very often. So if they're out on a medical and a fire, and they're getting ready to clear, and a fire comes in, we don't have the luxury of sending them back to the station to get the equipment for the structure fire and then responding out to the structure fire. So we really have to keep the equipment with the personnel. And even with our light-duty rescue, it's not uncommon for them to be out on a call, and a fire will come in, and they'll respond to the fire, but they get there first, but they don't have water on the truck, they don't have hose on the truck. They have some basic equipment, but they have to wait until the pumper gets there. So it's really about keeping the equipment with the firefighters and get it, being able to get to those lower risk, lower frequency, high-risk calls quicker.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Well, to follow up on that, Paula, because in the police study, the citywide study, it says that the police are responding more now, because the fire, the fire trucks aren't, like, there's so many calls that the police have to stop doing it.
And we'll touch on that a little bit. You're right, so there's a number of call types right now on the medical side that the Police Department is still handling. Our goal is, once we get to a certain staffing level here, that we're going to assume responsibility for those calls. But PD still responds on a lot of EMS calls with us. And part of it is because they might be closest, because they're out on the road. And another part of it really is for security purposes, because as you've seen recently, it's getting riskier and riskier for us. We're going into strangers' homes every day, all day long. And we don't always have the luxury of being able to see what's going on. And law enforcement, a lot of times, is there to, you know, not only assist with the medical, but to have our back on those calls to make sure our people are safe.
I just had two related questions. One is, remind me again how, what the kind of full-time versus paid-on-call equivalent is? Is it two to one?
Yes, that's so for the Insurance Services Office, it does evaluations for cities. That's what they have it rated as. So for every one full-time firefighter, it's the equivalent of two paid-on-call.
So we're bringing those numbers down every time we hire a full-time. Our number of necessary paid-on-call goes down by two.
Yes, which is why, well, we've reduced down to 70 so far. And then as we bring more full-time on, we'll continue to evaluate that number and adjust it as necessary.
So then my follow-up question is, that's all happened by attrition. We haven't had to ask people to leave at all, right? Okay.
Yes, I did have a question. So I've been talking with Mike Funker earlier. I have some questions about the, our EMT services and the problems with our ambulance response times. So Michael said, so all of our firefighters are EMTs?
Correct.
Can you tell me, like, what's the difference between an EMT and a paramedic? And like, what are the, what do, do our, do they carry like AEDs? Because I saw like the thing, you know, like, the longer it takes to get defibrillation, obviously, the more at-risk the patient is. But also, if someone's in need of defibrillation, they're in need of hospitals. They need to get They need to get to the hospital. So if they still have to wait for 15, 20 minutes for an ambulance to show up, that's not great either, so I'm just...
Yeah, so the easiest way to explain the difference between an EMT and a paramedic is, right now, paramedics can deliver narcotics and EMTs cannot. There's a lot of things we do at the EMT level that we never used to be able to do, that only paramedics can do. We do advanced airways, we're able to do, give glucose, nitro, epinephrine, do EKGs, we can, we can do all that. So really, that differentiation now, it really comes down to being able to deliver narcotics on scene for whether it's a cardiac-related event or something like, or an overdose, something like that, where they need IVs, needles stuck and...
So like Narcan, would that require...
We can give Narcan, yeah, cause that's not considered a narcotic for treatment, so.
Other questions? Paula?
Just if I'm understanding, if you could just confirm, the reason that a lot of this has gone over to the fire department though is because of issues with recruiting police who are EMT certified, is that correct? Or is that incorrect, my reading?
We have, we have some that are EMTs. And we carry AEDs in all cars and Narcan. So we'll get in that, there is, there is definitely an overlap with not only medical response, but mental health response with fire as they start to add to this staffing. And I'll cover that a bit more detail, yeah.
But, you know, for instance, a cardiac arrest event takes about eight people to manage. So, you know, between police and fire sending personnel and then the paramedics showing up, it's pretty intensive on how many people it takes to run those events, so. Good questions.
Other questions? All right, Chief, thank you very much. Good presentation. And so, last but not least, we've got our, our police department, so Chief Borboom and, and your command staff.
They are here.
Good to see you all.
And so I heard a lot what was talked about, and actually I think we're gonna cover most of it. I'll do this, this is more of an overview. And then our next PowerPoint is getting into more of the, the numbers, the requests and what that looks like. And so for our organizational chart, we have technically three divisions. One is led by Deputy Chief Jason Tate. And he oversees all of our, our training, our hiring, anything to do with professional standards. We have a lot of policy adherence, state statutes, our post board, who licenses us. There's just a lot that goes into that. If we get a complaint on any of our staff, he'll, he'll manage that along with Miranda's team in HR. And then our patrol division is our largest division in, in the police department. And that's led by Rachel Meehan. That are the officers who are wearing a uniform, out there 24/7, responding to calls for service. It's our animal control folks, our cadet program. And we have a variety of volunteers, like our, our police explorers, which are young high school kids that maybe are interested in law enforcement. And then our police reserves, which are also a volunteer group. And then Captain Andy Gardner, who is going to retire in a month. This may be his last, well, he'll come for recognition, but his last official working study session. Leads our investigative, investigations and support services. Our support services are our records folks who meet people at the front door, gather reports for data requests. And our detectives, you know, we in, in, in any agency in Hennepin County for that matter, we handle everything from somebody vandalized or stole my bicycle out of a car, all the way up to homicide. We handle it all here. Our detectives are cross-trained. We do have some specialty investigators. We have one that's assigned to the Southwest Hennepin Drug Task Force. They work with several other agencies and the county, primarily dealing with high-level drug use. And lately, it's been around opioids, fentanyl. We have two SROs. And then we have two officers, or two detectives at Ridgedale. We actually have a substation at Ridgedale. And then we also have a detective who's assigned to a electronic crimes work group that's led by the Secret Service. We deal with a lot of equipment, technology, computers, cell phones. And to have software to be able to review that evidence is very costly. So being a partner with the federal government, we actually benefit from the training. He gets for free and then all the equipment, equipment that comes along with that. All said and done, we have 64 sworn officers. When I mean by sworn, those are us that are licensed by the state of Minnesota to be a police officer. It's including myself and any other officer who is wearing the dark uniform. And then we have about 14 support staff. That's our records, our cadets and our animal control, community service officers. When I look at highlights, you know, I'm very proud to say we responded over 43,000 calls for service last year. That's a lot of interacting and we've had great interaction and we do a lot of good work. But I'm gonna point out some things that we're very proud of beyond just our normal, you know, duty and mission to go out and serve and protect. Our transparency dashboard, we have a couple new council members here today. If you didn't know, on our website, there is a data portal. And there's a lot of interactive things you can look at. You can see our, our call for service. We've added this in last year. You can, you can look up in real time, any call for service. You can see the map of the city, you can see the location. You can look at crime. If you wanna look and say, how many burglaries occurred between January 1st and June 1st? You can look at all the burglaries. We have that available to you. We now track all use of force. Anytime an officer uses force, we track demographic information, what type of force was applied. There's a lot of information there. We also track, we have license plate readers, that's technology that we use. We track all the results of our LPRs. We have roughly 13, is that correct? 13 LPRs in the city. We've been able to recover a lot of stolen vehicles. In fact, the state of Minnesota has given us grant money because of the success we've have, we have with our LPRs. And then mental health. We track all our mental health calls. We had roughly 467 last year. We track, was a referral to our social worker? What was the, what was the reason for the call? Was it substance abuse, homelessness? You know, a variety of issues, we track all of that. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about mental health when I get down into one of our, some of our challenges. And so there's, there's other things on our dashboard that you can see that are very interactive. Our goal is to be transparent, we've got nothing to hide. Other highlights for last year is we received several grants to help absorb some of these costs. One has been mentioned as our DWI traffic enforcement officer. If you looked in our study, there was a recommendation to add two traffic officers. And by receiving this grant, we were able to fulfill that requirement. I shouldn't say requirement, that, that, kinda that need. And that, that grant covers the full salary of that traffic enforcement officer. They're primarily responsible for DWI enforcement, drug enforced, drug impairment. And so that, that is a annual grant. But I think that our experience is that if you are doing good work and you're showing results, you'll continue to recover that. We also received an auto theft grant. We took one of our existing detectives and, and we were already dealing with a lot of auto theft investigations. And so we were able, able to offset that salary by about $100,000 per year. And that's a three-year grant. And then we had a request in the CIP for a camera trailer, about $60,000 that we also received. So that was nice to be able to take that out of the CIP. We worked with Julie's team on a homelessness response. And really, that just enhances our response to homelessness by coordinating. It used to be, you know, they may get something, we get something, we don't connect the dots. So this way, it's a, it's a really interactive way. We track it by mapping and then utilizing his house. It's been very successful. And then our New Americans Academy, we hosted that last year. It's a six-week program. It's really geared towards new folks that come here to the United States. Oftentimes, we think, you know, where people had bad experience with policing. And so our goal is to just have a good interaction. In fact, I can, I think it was a couple weeks ago, we had, we had, we tried to stop a car and the car just kept going. And we come to realize that this person is not comfortable with police, came from a different country and was really reluctant to stop. So anything we can do to have great positive interactions, we certainly want to do that. Some challenges in recruitment, it's already been mentioned. Some numbers for our, our data folks. And so, like I mentioned, we're about 64 authorized. And in patrol, which is Rachel's division, there's about 37, all right? In the last two years, we've hired 14 officers that went into patrol. And of that 37, so it's a very young group that are out there on, on the streets responding to calls. 14 new officers in the last year, two years, I'm sorry, a little, yeah, about two years. Three support staff, three cadets. And currently, we have nine openings for police officer. So all said and done, when we hire, we'll be about 23 new officers in about two years. So that's about, that's a big number. And so that's why it's really important for, for Jason and the training, our training unit to really make sure we have good training. Because it's through experience, you know, you could have a brand-new officer that gets a call that they've never experienced before. And so we just, you don't know what you're going to get at any given time. One thing we, we are looking at is because we have nine openings, our cadet program is extremely successful. In fact, we're getting 670 applicants that, for cadets. Those are individuals that maybe are looking to go to school or in school. And, you know, we can kinda grab them and get them in here. And then once they graduate, they can become police officers. We have three right now that at one point, they'll be moving from the light blue cadet uniform into our, into the dark blue. And so it's very successful. So we'll continue to do that and hopefully enhance it with our openings. And one thing I wanna mention is that we, we still have high standards. We, we expect good officers. We haven't had a need to offer hiring bonuses or do anything like that. We have a good reputation in the, in the, in the region. We attract a lot of lateral officers, officers from other communities who, you know, who hear about Minnetonka. And so we do, we do fairly well, but our standards have remained the same. And at the end of every interview, I sit down with two community members. They've been with me for two years, Mary Pat Blake and Deborah Finney. And we decide if they move on. And so I'm very proud that they're involved. I'm very excited that they continue to wanna be, excited about coming and seeing the officers, but it does serve a purpose. Another is organized crime. As I mentioned, we have two detectives at Ridgedale. And we've seen not so much, you know, one-offs where, you know, the days of a 16, 17-year-old stealing a pair of pants is not what we see anymore. We see large groups of people who travel across the United States and take large quantities of clothing, several thousands of dollars. Last year, we had a group out of Ireland that was here scamming homeowners for roofing repairs. If you saw that in the news. We've also been dealing with a large-scale theft operations that are coming out of South America. So we have seen larger groups that are coming in and stealing a lot of stuff or, you know, committing more of that organized crime, which are very difficult to, you know, to investigate. Mental health, and we're gonna talk about this, not only right, I'll talk about briefly right now, but we're gonna talk about it more in our public safety study. When I think about mental health, that's, that's tough because there's, there's two things to look at when you talk about mental health. One is someone, we had about 467 last year. And so what it looks like, someone calls 911, someone's in crisis. Regardless of what time of day it is, it's gonna come to the police department. I mean, there's no other community organization or anybody else that's able to respond at this given time right now. And we're looking for opportunity with fire. And then that's the initial response. The follow-up is we're our social worker and we have a mental health unit that will then try to connect with that person to try to find resources. So it's very difficult to remove that initial response by police because we're out there 24/7. Where we, where we actually do a really good job is the follow-up. So our social worker, Kelly, who is a Hennepin County employee, will, will, will meet with that, you know, whoever that is, and try to find what resource they need. So we do a lot of follow-up on the backend with our mental health, with our mental health team. And I'll talk a bit more, more in the public safety study about how I think there's some opportunity with fire. Professional development, that really is because of all of our new officers we're hiring. We're spending a lot of energy around training. And that, you know, again, and that goes without being said, is that's probably really, that's really important. And I'd really appreciate the support in our budget to make sure that happens. And I mentioned, you know, you provided dollars for crisis intervention training to make sure all our officers are gonna receive that this year. And 25 has a very similar challenges. Software costs, we subscribe to a lot of technology. And that technology, like it was mentioned with our body-worn cameras, our LPR, everything we have now has a subscription or some sort of a software fee. And those costs do not go away. And oftentimes, we think something's really good to have, but it comes with these other costs that you have to factor in. And then we are paying attention to the OPUS area. That is another area where we're kinda watching what happens with fire. So anything we can do to fire is relocated someplace, we can kinda fill in a spot in the, we don't need our own space is kinda what I mean. So we're kinda watching to see what happens there. Some goals and innovations, as I mentioned, one thing I do wanna back up real quick. In our, in our middle management, frontline supervisors, we have, we have 12 sergeants. And in two years, we'll have replaced eight of them and a captain. So that's the other area of professional development, is our middle managers to make sure that they receive the training they need to supervise young officers. And so we're working with HR and bringing in some facilitators to help with that. Mental health response. And so, as I kinda mentioned how we respond, and we're really, we always look for opportunity to collaborate and work with others. But in the, in the public safety study, there is a recommendation for two additional officers just for mental health. And when I get the, when I get to the public safety study, you'll see that I pushed that back because I am optimistic that there's gonna be opportunity with, with additional fire staff that we can then remove the police, maybe on the front end on some of those calls. If we triage a call and someone's in crisis, there's no threat of violence. Is there really a need for a police officer to respond? If not, can we have a firefighter respond or a group of firefighters? You know, how can that, what does that look like? So I think that's where the opportunity is. Technology, I'll talk a little bit about our detectives and the request for that. We need to do a better job of like managing the caseload of how many cases our detectives are handling, what's their solvability, what is the outcome? Drones, we're seeing, you know, we've always been a proponent of mutual aid and all the cities around us have, have a drone program. And we have found that oftentimes, we'll call, whether we have a missing person, someone who's fled into a wooded area, a variety of reasons that drones are becoming a very useful piece of technology. And so we're gonna be looking at, what does that look like for us? Communication strategy, talked about social media. You may have gotten calls about helicopters up in the air and they're wondering what's going on. And we often are called, you know, why aren't we seeing this on, on some sort of social media platform? Why does it take a day? And so we're just trying to figure out, what does that look like? You know, how do we let people know what's going on in a timely manner? And so working with the staff with communications. And then ultimately, our public safety master plan is our, is our kinda continuation of that. And that's pretty much it. And then I know there'll be more in the, in the master plan, but I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor and the council.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief? Kimberly?
I do have some questions about the mental health response, but I think I'll hold on to that. So like, just from your, from your presentation thing. So the, the 14 new hires, are those mostly due to retirements? That you've had, have so many young officers now?
Yeah, so we added in last year's, or this, in last, this year's budget, we added five. So that, we're at 59. Majority of these are through attrition, are through retirements, correct? And I think if you go back 25 or 30 years, they hired a lot and we're seeing that too. We do see the tail end. We think going into next year, we're gonna see the, kinda the backend of it. Now you have to retain them.
Right.
And I think we do a pretty good job, once you, once you actually, we get you here, we can kinda hold you. And not hostage.
Could you hang on to Andy a little longer?
He already stayed a year longer.
Oh, okay. And I, I think this has been asked of you before, you've addressed this before, but we sometimes have people concerned about the privacy concerns with the license plate readers. So could you speak to how that technology is used and what's retained?
Yeah, and someone is gonna jump in if I get it wrong. So I, and when LP, license plate readers first came out, there was really no control over the data storage and how it was being used, you know. Am I tracking, you know, Dr. Wilburn in your neighborhood? You know, am I tracking, you know, Dr. Wilburn in your neighborhood for six months? And now there's some structure around that. I believe our retention, what is it, 60, 90 days? 59? So now 59 days. So if you were to drive into Ridgedale, we have license plate readers. What we utilize them for is, is, they call them hot files. So if there's a stolen car, missing person, wanted person, as soon as that car goes into the Ridgedale area, it automatically alerts all the cars right away that there's a stolen vehicle. And then when, typically, we get there, we find the car unoccupied, and we try to recover the car. And sometimes we catch somebody with that. Back in the day, I think there was concern that people were utilizing the, like going to the back end and say, oh, I saw you came here at this certain time. And it was Big Brother, right, tracking me? That's not the use of LPRs. Now, could somebody abuse it like anything else? Absolutely. But you got to have a good policy around that. And Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Operation, they track all use of LPRs. So we have to report to them our use of LPRs. And so I think when they tightened up that timeframe, so we don't just collect this data indefinitely, that alleviated a lot of those concerns. And you got to utilize it, like any other piece of technology we have. If you use it the wrong way, that's what gets us, that's, that's when people start to ask those questions.
Other, other questions? Kizzy?
I guess my question is going to be similar to my asked fire chief. In regards to, it sounds like we hired five new officers in 2024, and we've hired 14 officers in the last two years?
Well, five additional, and filled vacancies.
Okay.
So really, the addition is those five.
Okay. So what is the 14 officers then?
Those are people who have retired, and we had to fill their spot. So like when Andy leaves, we'll have to promote a captain, promote a sergeant, and then hire somebody. So that would be considered a hire. We're not adding, not technically adding.
Or you're just filling the spots when someone leave, okay?
That's exactly it.
And then it sounds like you're going to be hiring, you need 23 more officers in about, you said, two years?
That'll be in total 23, all said and done. But not additional officers. We're still at that, we're still at that five.
Also, you're still filling spots for 23 officers, okay?
We've got three or four retirements this year.
Okay.
That we anticipate.
Okay. So that makes sense, okay? Because I was thinking, I thought you were hiring 23 more officers in the next two years.
No, in other public safety study, you'll see our, like, our end goal.
Okay.
Yeah, most of the hiring we're doing is through retirements.
Okay, so I guess I don't have to ask you that question then. Because that makes more sense to me, okay?
Other questions? You know, I'll, I'll comment because I think, you know, you, you mentioned that there's 14 new officers, we have nine openings. So that's the 23 new officers that we have gotten in the last year or two. But, but I know that, you know, as I, over the last several years, I've looked at staffing in our police department. We are one of the most leanly-staffed police departments in the West Metro. We have fewer, you know, per capita, we probably have fewer sworn officers than any other city. So we're doing it pretty efficiently. And, and, you know, how you look at that data, well, it's, it's great, but as needs and issues are risen, well, we could argue, well, maybe we're a little underpoliced and we need some more people. And so I've been supportive of adding, adding officers because we're still not going to be overstaffed relative to our neighboring communities. We're going to be kind of catching up a little bit. And, you know, as, as crime has gotten more sophisticated, you know, it's, it's a more challenging job, as, as has been suggested here. And I just wanted to thank our police department, our fire department, for the work that they do at the state of the city on Friday. I had a friend there, and I saw him talking to Captain Mihon because this friend of mine has a son who is really struggling with mental health, and he's schizophrenic. And, and I know he is on, I mean, I know our officers have been to their house many, many times. And, you know, just how we handle that, my friend and his wife are so thankful for the professional treatment that his son, who is not an easy human being, trust me on that, has received from our, from our police department. So I think that's, that's really significant, and I'm appreciative of that, so thank you. And then, you know, I talked to the chief not too long ago because in my neighborhood, there was a, there was a break-in. And it was part of these professional, professional criminals. The chief suggests that it was likely these South Americans that are coming up and, and kind of roving bands across the country. And there's a professional hockey player who lives in my neighborhood. He's in, he, he's in New York most of the year. And so, you know, they, they just highlight and go after, you know, they know where they're going, they know what they're looking for. They didn't steal anything because they were looking for jewelry, and there was no jewelry in that house. But our, but our police officers knew, and, and the chief met with the neighborhood association because they had some questions. What can we do to protect ourselves? And I just want to thank the chief for, for doing that. And, you know, I mean, when crimes happen to you, it's very personal. And it happened in our neighborhood, and I just wanted to say thank you. But I can say, and I, and I brag on our police department, our fire department a lot, we've really got a great professional public safety department. And they're here to help our residents, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. So thank you both, and thank you all. Kizzy?
I have one more comment or question. I know you talked about professional development and the calls, 467 mental health calls last year, 2023. I'm wondering, are we doing anything to cross-train police officers? I know we have the one, the social worker that works through Hennepin County in the partnership. But what are we doing to cross-train? Are we, I don't know, I just think about cross-training and giving incentives to police officers to cross-train in mental health.
Yeah, that's, I mean, so last year, so there's this, there's a, what they, a bench, like a best-practice gold standard training for those, responding to those in crisis. It's a one-week training program through crisis intervention training. And last year, I was, I received through the budget, one-time funding to get all officers to that one-week training. And part of that training is through scenario-based. And so really, I mean, that's probably our, our most extensive training, is a solid one week of training. So all of our officers by the end of the year will be crisis intervention-trained. And so because of that, we, there, there, there will never be a 100% response by, you know, we always have to be prepared to response, respond to somebody in crisis. There's just, there's no, there's no other person that can do that. And so, and that's the hard part, you got to wear that hat. And in medicals, yeah, we can kind of give up some of that, but even on a, on a crisis, it, it may be somebody that is armed, well, fire will not go, so then we still have to go. So we're just trying to find that perfect balance. But to your point, Kizzy, we definitely cross-train in mental health response. And we have a unit that does a little more training.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any other, any other questions, council? We're getting late, I want to be respectful. Deb, anything for you?
Just so you know, we do have more presentations.
Okay, all right.
I, I think a lot of it's going to be covered in the study.
Yep.
And I'm taking nine questions for that.
Okay, well, that's, let's, let's move on, and we'll, we'll wrap it up here, but.
Can you tee up that, Miranda? And so this is being teed up. This study that not only police did, but fire did concurrently is, is a, like a staffing assessment, pretty much looked at everything that we do. And the, and the reason why we chose the same consultant is because they use a lot of data to guide their recommendations. And so fire was actually going with them first, and then we kind of jumped on at the same time just because of that. We have the same data, why are we paying two different consultants? Let's use the same consultant. So a little bit of overview, because I know we have some, two new council members, and this is a five- to seven-year plan. It's very flexible. And so when you see these numbers, these are the recommendations by the consultant. And then police and fire really looked at each of the recommendations and figured out over the next five or seven years, how do we prioritize these recommendations? And our plan is, is that, this came forward last year, and we made recommendations for our 24 budget. We're here tonight to focus on 25, but we also are going to highlight beyond 25, so you can kind of see what that roadmap looks like. And again, this is flexible. There, we have to be flex, we have to be ready to pivot. There's a lot of pressure, and we, we recognize that because most of the things we're talking about have dollar signs attached to them, and some are pretty large. So first one, I point that out, and for really for police, like I said, operations and staffing assessment, they took a look at everything that we do and then provided an analysis based on best practices. And I'll point out that our consultants came out of California, both in the fire service and police service, and they do this work all over the country. And so highly respected consultants that we utilized. They looked at our staffing, our supervision management, support functions. And, and many of the recommendations do not cost money, or they're low-cost. But we'll focus in on kind of the high-level ones that do cost money. And then one thing that they identified, well, I'll take that, they did about eight-month study, I, I, let's keep going, actually. Five themes, five themes emerged from, from the assessment. And you can kind of see them covered in there, and if you want me to go into detail, I can, but I think I, for time, I think I'll get to the substance. So if there's questions that come up, just to kind of keep it, keep it flowing here. That's, the most is, the first, first few slides is really just kind of the background. There were 59 key findings and 47 specific, specific action items. And so what we do, what we did is took all 59, put them into a spreadsheet, and kind of started to play them a little bit on seeing where these should fit and, and looking at their recommendations. Some highlights from 24 is that, this is getting to some of the questions that came up. We did add four officers, and really what that did is allowed us to create a power shift. What the consultants discovered is like during, during, typically Monday through Friday, from about 10:00 a.m. to about 8:00 p.m., our, our ability to respond to calls was diminished because we didn't have enough staff working in the streets. And so by adding those four officers, which are, which are part of the nine that we haven't hired yet, that would allow us to create an entirely different shift to help take away some of that pressure. We added a sergeant to really help with the standard, professional standards. Again, that's training and, you know, accountability, things like that. The crisis intervention training, I already kind of covered. I was given $30,000, about $1,000 per person. We are, at the end of the year, we'll have every officer trained in CIT. And then we have a, a mental health data collection in, on our website, on one of our data portals. That's where you can go and see how many calls are responded to, what was the nature of the, of the, of the call. Like I mentioned, homelessness, was it chemical dependency, mental health, a variety of different things that are tracked. That's Kelly. She's a Hennepin County social worker that we contract with. She works full-time in the police department, and so she's here every day. And then some new technologies, our camera trailer, our license plate readers. And then we have a, we won't get into detail, but we, we spend a lot of time in briefings twice a week where we have intelligence-driven directed patrol. So our analysts will say, hey, officers, this is where things are happening. You need to be in those areas at this time and this day. Instead of just driving around waiting for something, it really focuses our resource, our resources in certain areas. And so for 2025, based on the recommendation, there is a request, or will be a request, to add one case detective. And as I mentioned earlier in, in the other presentation, our detectives cover a variety of investigations, from death investigations, burglary, theft, assault, and criminal damage to property. In '22, you'll see that there was a spike, and now we've kind of leveled off a little bit, which is good news. But in '22, if you recall, we also had an incident involving somebody breaking windows that, that, there was about 85 of those calls were, came from that case. And so you can see all these things can kind of go up and down. So you really got to look at over several years. But we do notice that cases are going up, and the complexity of those cases is what we're paying attention to. And what I mean by that is most cases we deal with have a cell phone or a laptop or some other technology that we have to get search warrants for. So our detectives are spending a lot more time on individual cases. I have an example of, we had a theft by swindle case involving a home builder. Took over seven months to investigate it, and it was involving a theft of over $500,000 to a resident here in Minnetoka. And so just a lot of work that goes into these individual cases. Mentioned that what we call the travelers, people who had traveled all over the country. We end up working with our state officials, our federal officials, and things just take a lot longer because these cases are more, more complex. And we looked at some studies, and so like an average death investigation, and you may think, okay, how many death investigations do we have? But we have folks that passed away from natural causes that are unwitnessed, suicide. And in last year, we had 62. So if it's unwitnessed death or a suicide, our detectives will respond and investigate that. And there are studies that show that it takes about 14 hours per death investigation. And for a homicide, which we didn't have what I would call a homicide last year, but we had three overdoses last year that resulted in a death. And we treat every overdose death as a homicide because we want to be able to hopefully track down, you know, maybe there was a supplier that provided the drug that caused the death. And so those can take over 146 hours to, to investigate. And then the, kind of the ones that, kind of the run-of-the-mill, a typical burglary investigation is over 12 hours, and then a credit card fraud is about 17 hours. And so we just have seen over the years, the complexity of these cases has become much greater. And, you know, we want to make sure our detectives have the time to put in a thorough investigation and hopefully bring some, some sort of resolution to that, to that case. And so that is a request for the police department for next year. And there are some other, what I would call, I don't call them low-cost because they do come with a cost, but it's low. Is, I mentioned this is more of a, a platform to really track the work detectives do, the caseload, solvability, how many cases are we solving? How many are we submitting to the attorney? Things like that. We want to be able to have a system that does a better job than our current system to do that. And then facilities, that's really just really taking a look at what opportunity we have with either fire or a developer and, and putting some sort of a, an substation or a storefront. Because with all, with the trail system and, and OPUS, it's just on the corner of our city. We want to be able, we have, we have bike patrol, and so I want to have, have the ability to have our officers parked there and go into the, into the area on bike. And, I mean, just, just to, just to be present. So we're going to, we're going to kind of see what happens with the fire studies and, and the future of OPUS. And then this is going beyond 25, so we'll, we'll be back next year to talk about, you know, kind of 26 and beyond. But we, we recognize Ridgedale is, is a large, you know, presence in our city. There's a lot of activity at Ridgedale. And so the recommendation is to take a look at adding two more detectives to that area. And while they're stationed at Ridgedale, they're also responsible for all retail crime in Minnetoka. So if there's an incident at the Target at 711, the detectives will be responsible for that, even though they work out of Ridgedale. We are looking at maybe trying to approach Ridgedale to see what kind of partnership we can have. One of the things we're, we're, you know, obviously paying attention to is that they, they pay taxes, they expect, you know, safety at the, at the mall. And, you know, we want safety because it brings in a lot of visitors every month, and so what is our obligation? But yet, we're actually in the mall, and we provide a service to the mall. And so we're really going to kind of look at that over the next year, what that, what that could look like. One thing is, we have an office up there that's very inadequate, that I think at the, at the very minimum, we should be able to approach them to see if they could, you know, maybe make it a little bit nicer for us. And that was a case, our, our detective in the middle, Heather, it was a employee theft that was stealing over a million dollars in merchandise from Nordstrom's and sell, and selling it on like eBay. And so they're very active up there, and again, they're not dealing with, you know, someone stealing a pair of pants. It's, it's large-scale theft operations worth thousands, and in this case, it was over a million dollars in merchandise. 27 and 28, I'll just kind of go over this again because we'll be back to visit next year. Recommendation was to add four, have, or add two officers, making it a four-officer traffic unit. We've added one with this, with this DWI grant. We'll evaluate that and see how, how, how well it performs and obviously report back. And, but that is a recommendation. And then there's some, there's some minimal no-costs in there, and I, I won't get into that. And then upper right-hand corner is, I, I know I put it out to 2028, and you're, and I know the question would be, well, that's really important, why are we waiting? Because the recommendation is to add two officers that would, that would perform this function. And I think before we add two people, let's figure out how we can partner with fire and maybe not add two officers and reallocate those dollars someplace else. So that, that's why that is there. And then that part-time, that actually has been already, ignore that one because I'm going to point out something here. That was. That was a recommendation to add somebody to help out in our property room. These are some grants I kind of covered already to help, you know, kind of cover the cost. And some are going to continue on into next, in the next two years. But we continue to look for grant opportunities because we know this is really expensive. And then this is kind of our, this is, this is the snapshot on, on total increase to police over the next five to seven years. We've already accomplished the twenty twenty-four numbers. The community engagement officer, you know, that was one of the, that was, that was a position I brought in two thousand and sixteen with a focus on really, it was one person that really enhanced our outreach efforts. It worked very well. And, and, and what we did is, we looked at it and said, you know, it's one officer, it should be more than one officer. So we actually solicited input from officers who had an interest in doing like this work. And they're doing it in addition to their normal job. So instead of having one person do it, we're a department of sixty-four. We have about, I don't know, six or seven officers that want to do this work on our behalf. And so then we were able to take that position and, and then use it in one of the patrol officers. We didn't have to hire, we just kind of re, kind of reallocated that position. So still kind of work in progress, but I, I think the outcome will be, will be good. The, so that we're not asking for a community engagement officer this year, and you won't see that in the future. The detective, retail detectives there, the traffic officer, and again, the twenty twenty-eight mental health. I, I hope that we will find a different approach to that, and I, I'm pretty optimistic about that. And then our, our records manager took a look at our request there for a property room specialist. And she actually said, you know what, I think I can do that. She's already a full-time employee, she goes, I can, I can, I can do that point-five work for you without adding a person. So that's why that, that was changed in twenty twenty-eight. And so I think it'll turn over to fire, and then at the end, I think we can answer questions if that works.
That works.
Great, thanks, Chief.
Okay, I got my cheaters on here. So the Citygate study that was conducted was a review of our fire department deployment and overall organization. They found the department that was, it was well-organized and was well-supported with managerial infrastructure. So the recommendations that we're presenting are again, a kind of a five-year, five-to-seven-year plan, but remain highly flexible. The most significant issues that are facing our department is going to be our response performance and our staffing capacity and our fire station physical limitations. So overall, the study found, they had twenty-one key findings and five actionable recommendations. With, again, similar to PD, the costs with, most of the costs are going to be with personnel and the fire stations. Overall, they recommended twenty-one additional full-time employees. And then other recommendations they made include policy, policy decisions that the council will make with our standards of cover. So overall recommendations, they recommend we get the standards of cover eventually. And that's, that's a pretty loose term, and I'll, I'll explain that as, as we go here when we talk about the fire stations. But eventually staffing all five fire stations, rebuilding or remodeling of the satellite fire stations. Hire career firefighters for that baseline staffing. Work with our paid-on-call firefighters to maximize that capacity and then address the EMS issues that we're, we're running up against. So I'm, I'm not going to get too deep in this, but it kind of touches on what I talked about earlier when we talk effective response force and what the, the best practices are. And so what this says, and what this would be laid out in a standards of cover for the council. For like a first-do unit, it's a eight-and-a-half-minute response time. And that includes from the time they call nine-one-one with, and that's ninety percent of the time is, is the standard. But on a nine-one-one call, that equates to a, a one-and-a-half-minute call processing time in the dispatch center. And then a two-minute turnout time by the firefighters, depending on, a lot of that has to do with time of day. During the day, we're out the door in about ninety seconds or less, but at night, it's, it's a little bit longer. So they, they go with a two-minute crew turnout time and then a five-minute travel time. And then our effective response force, which is for the larger incidents, that's where that thirteen-to-nineteen personnel comes in. That number does go up though to eleven-and-a-half minutes ninety percent of the time because they understand more personnel are coming from, from different locations and further away. And then same, similar with hazardous materials and technical rescue, so I won't dive too deep into that. So the recommendations that we completed in, again, in twenty twenty-three was we established our expected service life for our fleet and, and put together a, a replacement plan. We developed our staffing enhancement plan that includes the addition of the full-time firefighters that we added and that we're also going to be asking for. We began staffing Station Two during peak hours. We currently staff or cross-staff a ladder truck out of our Station Three on the south end of town so that the personnel down there have an engine and a ladder. And then depending on the call type and the need, they can pull either one of those. So that allows us to get that ladder truck on scene quicker. Those apparatus are very large, and on structure fires, if they're not one of the first couple of trucks to arrive, we can never get them close enough to be effective at, at a, at a structure fire. So it's important that we get those there as soon as possible, so that significantly helps. And then we improved our duty, began to improve our duty crew turnout times. So our twenty twenty-three daily staffing looked like we had one captain and one firefighter technician out of our Station One. And that's in addition to, we have a battalion chief that runs out of there. We also then would attempt to staff three paid-on-call out of Station One. And then at Station Three, we would have up to one, one paid-on-call and then one full-time lieutenant and one full-time firefighter daily. So that was an authorized strength of twenty-three-and-a-half full-time employees and then that seventy paid-on-call. And the, the graph just kind of shows the distribution of it with that Station Two shifting a truck from Station One to Station Two between eight AM and seven PM. So some of our to-dos for twenty twenty-four is get the service-level policy objectives adopted, standards of cover. We're hiring three full-time firefighters, which will on, begin in July, we've actually started the process. So all the testing's done, interviews are done. We should build a, start pre, make offers and start pre-employment stuff here probably in May. And then through backgrounds, that'll, that'll put them on board by July. And then we have begun to engage with world architects on doing our fire station assessment. So with the addition to the three, of the three firefighters this year, that adds one firefighter daily. So three, you know, sounds a lot at, at first, it's like, wow, you got three more people. And well, that really only gives us one per day because we run the, the three shifts. So we will add that. And then it begins to ensure that we can keep that third truck in service with that additional person. Because then if we're, if we're light on paid-on-call, they can backfill that in. And that's going to begin to allow us to transfer some of the rest of that EMS response from the police department over to the fire department. And that would bring our, that will bring our full-time to twenty-six point five with still seventy paid-on-call. In twenty twenty-five, we're asking for nine additional full-time firefighters. And that will establish a daily minimum of eight full-time firefighters on duty. It not, it does a couple of things here. One is it starts to begin to establish vacancy capacity. Right now, if one of our full-time firefighters is sick or on vacation, we either have to attempt to fill it with a paid-on-call. But if we're already short on that end, it's tough to, to get them to fill in, or we have to fill it with overtime costs. So helping with that vacancy capacity is going to not only drive down our, some of our overtime costs, but it's going to begin to allow us to staff that third station up on the north end of town twenty-four hours a day. So whereas right now, we staff Station Two just during the day, those peak hours. We would no longer, at least for now, staff two, we'd move them over to our Station Five, which is just a little further west. Still has quick response time to that Ridgedale area, but we would be staffed twenty-four hours a day now. And that would then bring our full-time to thirty-five point five full-time and still seventy part-time paid-on-call. And then some additional costs with that. So the, the additional full-time employees is about one point three-five million. And then the Community Health Alliance is an organization we're hoping to partner with. They're, they're used by some other cities around us, St. Louis Park is one of them. This is an organization that can assist us when we have calls for service that are repeat calls. So we have a lot of, a lot of customers that we go there sometimes multiple times a day, multiple times a week. What this company can do is they get involved and they help connect them with the resources that they need to help reduce the number of calls. Because, and the special thing about this organization is they're licensed and have access to the patient's medical records. So because of that, they can access their records, they can, they can help them with Medicare stuff and some of these other insurance things and some of these other benefits out there that maybe the customer was unaware of was even available to them. Last year, St. Louis Park, with the use of this company, was to reduce their call volume by a thousand calls. So pretty significant. We're looking at potentially around a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for, if we at that point start to begin any type of fire station design project. So that's an additional two hundred and thirty-five thousand total, I believe, if I can see that without my cheaters.
That's correct.
Okay, then we'll move on. Twenty twenty-six recommended daily staffing, we would look at potentially another six full-time firefighters. This would begin to staff the other satellite stations. So potentially staffing Station Two. It works towards our effective response force goal and would bring the fire, uh, full-time to forty-one point five and seventy paid-on-call at about nine hundred thousand dollars in additional costs. Twenty twenty-seven, very similar, we look at six, and that would staff our Station Four down on the southwest corner of the city. And then continuing to reduce our response times. And that's the point that meets our, our effective response force as laid out by the consultants. Bringing our full-time to forty-seven point five and seventy respectively at nine hundred thousand. Prior to this point, we're going to have to start taking a look though, because a lot of this is contingent on where we are with the satellite stations. Because if these Station Two and Four can't accommodate twenty-four-hour-a-day staffing, we'll have to begin to look at, do we continue? We, we have the capacity to bring the people on and, and disperse them among the stations that, that can accommodate. But it's not going to necessarily put them at this time in the areas that we need them until we can, we figure out and get the, the fire stations squared away for that twenty-four-hour staffing. So that's why we're going to have to continue to really remain highly flexible here. Okay, and I kind of just hit on a lot of this. So some of the implementation issues, the cost of the personnel, the station planning and potential construction, the time that it's going to take to ready the fire stations for the staffing. We are, we haven't completely written it off yet, but exploring the potential idea of maybe combining our stations on the north, two and five, into just one station, maybe in a more central location. It'll still give us the benefits of the quick response time in that area with having fewer facilities to have to staff. So that's one of the things that the consultant or the architects are going to look at. And we'll kind of evaluate that as we go. What is the future of the paid-on-call firefighters? You know, we've talked about as we had more full-time staff, do we at some point start to draw down that? And what, and where do we have to be before we can start doing that? And then with the recruitment and retention problems that we're continuing to see. We're a busy fire department, we ask a lot of our paid-on-call firefighters, and it's a big demand. And people are busy these days, and it's just, it's becoming very difficult for them to do this. And when we do exit interviews with people when they leave, you know, the big thing is they, they leave because they either have a, a major life change or a lot of, over thirty-five percent of them that left in the last two years left for full-time fire jobs. And then the others, there was that, that other percentage that it was just too much for them, they, they can't keep up with it. So we're going to continue to evaluate that and keep a close eye on it as long, and continue to recruit as long as we can. Changes in the healthcare system, we didn't talk a whole lot tonight about EMS. I could talk for a long time on the, the state of EMS. Nationwide, it's, it's in a crisis, Minnesota's no different. Minnesota has some unique challenges due to how our system was designed in the eighties. The good news is, there's some things going on at the state level right now, and it's starting to be addressed. So we, we hope to see some movements, but we don't know what that's going to look like in the next three to five years and where that's going to land. And we're going to have to keep a close eye on it and, and be ready to adapt accordingly, so. And then continue to monitor the standards of cover and service-level objectives. So our summary then, and I'm going to touch on one more thing after this, our summary. So twenty twenty-four, we will add that third apparatus twenty-four hours a day. We've applied for a SAFER grant, which I'll touch on in a minute. Twenty twenty-five, we're looking for potentially the nine firefighters to get our Station Five staffed up. And then Station Two with six in twenty twenty-six, potentially another six in twenty twenty-seven. And then that math does work out to twenty-four additional. Now, this year, we did apply for a SAFER grant, it's a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. This is the third year we've actually applied for it. The first year, we did have a grant writer that wrote it for us. We weren't super pleased with how that turned out. Last year, we got behind because they opened the grant process early on us, and we weren't able to secure a grant writer, so we wrote our own. And nationally, the success rate for this grant, when you write your own, is seven percent. We did land, we took out the big guns this year for grant writers and were able to secure a company out of Indiana, or out of Illinois. And they wrote our grant, their success rate is much higher, they're at about fifty-four percent success rate, so that's good news. It's not guaranteed, but if we were to get awarded this grant, we would be looking at hiring eighteen firefighters right away. It's a three-year, hundred percent covered grant. So they would cover the costs for the three years. And then in roughly quarter one of twenty twenty-eight, that's when the city would then become financially responsible for those hires. Some of the benefits of that is it would give us some tax levy relief over these next three years and give us an opportunity to kind of prepare and get ready then to assume that financial responsibility. And finance, Joel Mary was kind enough to kind of put this together for us down in the, in the lower right there. And it just shows a breakdown of what those numbers look like over the three years. So the total grant that we've applied for is eight point one million. And it's, starts out in twenty twenty-five at, at two point five, goes up to two point seven in twenty-six, and then two point eight in twenty twenty-seven. So if you kind of look at that trend in, in twenty-eight, when the city would become responsible, you're looking at, it would be pretty close to probably the three million mark. And I believe, question time.
All right, well, thanks very much to both of you. For some of us, this is pretty new, for some of us, we, we, we have got the whole, we, we all have the whole report, and there's, there's a lot in there. And, and it's, it's daunting, but, you know, I'll go back to something I've repeated every, you know, every year I've been mayor. It's that, you know, public safety is job one in cities, it's the job that we need to deliver to our residents. And, and, you know, it's getting more complex, it's getting more expensive. It's, and, and our city is getting more demanding. So thanks very much. I mean, I believe what's being done here, it's not, it's kind of like, okay, it's not that this isn't the right thing. It's okay, how do we figure out how we get to pay for it? Because I think that's, that's the challenge. But questions, anyone for? But questions, anyone for on the report or the presentations? Kimberly?
I have a few. So I'll start with EMS. You mentioned the number of overlapping calls you have. Do you have any idea of how much of that is attributed to waiting for Hennepin County to show up?
I don't off the top of my head. I would guess it's probably pretty low. Because we get such a large, even though seventy-five percent of our calls are EMS-related, we have such a large variety of them that, you know, at fifty-seven hundred calls a year, we're averaging, our average is about thirteen calls a day. Our busiest is thirty calls a day, and that's over a twenty-four-hour period. So I couldn't say. I think it's fairly low, though.
And then I actually have a bunch of questions about the mental health response, but I'll pare it down for now. Do you, so two questions. Do you anticipate if, you know, if we get the staffing increases in the stations and that fire service would be, would have enough personnel to handle mental, the mental health calls?
Yeah, I think what we would explore doing is similar to what police have done with cross-training our firefighters. So we would have a certain people on every shift that are capable to deal with these types of calls. It might not be the whole crew. It might be somebody that can, when the call comes out, one or two of them maybe can get in a pickup truck and respond to these incidents to deal with that. We wouldn't be sending, you know, necessarily the big truck with four people on it to deal with this stuff.
And then my last question is around dispatch with Brooklyn Park has a pilot going. Brooklyn Center was supposed to. I'm not sure what's happening with that. Minneapolis has, I think for domestic violence, a pilot going on. And like, each program is a little bit different. So do you worry about, since dispatch is coming from Hennepin County, like them knowing who to send?
I can, maybe, maybe someone could back me up on that. But so the Brooklyn Park, I believe, was a pilot based on a grant. I think their grant funding is coming to an end, and I don't know if there's any other grant funding. But I did hear it was a huge success. Because what they did, for those that don't know, when a call came in, the dispatch, the dispatcher triaged it and sent it to this, this community response team that I believe was a paramedic and... social worker, which was very, that would be ideal. You're right, though, working with the county dispatch to get, because we're asking, well, if it's so successful, why aren't we doing this like tomorrow? It's been years in the making. So, you know, we're hoping that's going to happen, but in the meantime, is there something, you know, even though a call comes out, can we triage it and send the appropriate resources? And so that's ultimately our goal, is to do something like that. But it would be nice if the county would enhance that pilot program and allow all agencies who are on the system to have something set up like that.
St. Paul is one of two.
I think there's a lot throughout the country trying to find an alternative response. At the end of the day, the police aren't always the right people to respond to a crisis.
Other questions? Anyone? Go ahead. Oh, excuse me, Deb, go ahead, and then Patsy.
I'm sorry, I'm really running out of steam here in time. So one thing that we've covered in, you know, many meetings, including the review of the fire study, had to do with replacement of fire trucks. And we did, you know, touch on, you know, the four-year build time and, you know, the increasing expense, the terrible inflation. And I'm just wondering, I know we needed a few really, kind of, I think it was three really high-dollar trucks. And I was just wondering where we are on that. And, you know, looking at page twenty-three of the study where it says that recommends, you know, that we establish an expected useful service life for each vehicle type. My understanding in talking to the former Chief Vance, I mean, I have a pretty good grip on, you know, sort of what the useful life was, but I'm just wondering, where are we in our vehicle replacement? And how close are we to meeting that, you know, setting that expected service life for each of our vehicles? And how are we paying for our trucks?
Good question, thank you. Yeah, so we have been working on the extended or expected service life. Historically, when, on the paid-on-call model, pumper trucks had a twenty-year life and ladder trucks had a thirty-year life. That's no longer relevant because the trucks run a lot more than they, than they used to now that, not only are, well, we're much busier. So the expected life now of a pumper truck is about ten to twelve years. And then our ladders have moved to about twenty years. And then we do refurbish them and spruce them up kind of halfway through their life. So that's kind of what we're looking at now for replacement schedules. We have three that we ordered last year. So those are three to, about three and a half years out. So we ordered them last year. We won't see them till twenty twenty-eight-ish. We did order one two years ago that we are just now going to start the pre-build on this fall. So once we do that, that puts us on the clock for about eighteen months. That we'll have that vehicle within that eighteen-month period. So hopefully, in the next year and a half, we'll be getting our next new vehicle that we ordered two years ago. So there's not a lot we can do about that. But I think as we move forward through the years here, we're going to have to be strategic. If those types of build times remain, I think we're going to have to be strategic and get creative on how we're going to plan for those replacements, because it doesn't do me any good if I need a truck today if I'm going to get it in four years. So I think we're going to have to look at how we're going to do that. But I'm hoping these build times don't remain this high. There was kind of a perfect storm of things that happened that, between supply chain issues and influx of COVID funds that allowed a lot of cities to buy trucks. And there was just a lot going on, and they've seen record numbers of orders of apparatus. So they're hoping over the next few years that might, that pace might slow a little bit. But it's all backlogging, because our manufacturer that we use can build, their capacity is twelve hundred trucks a year. And they had an order of twenty-four hundred trucks last year. So that gives them a surplus of twelve hundred trucks that they couldn't build over the orders that were received. And that carries on. And now if they have a record year this year, that adds on, and it just continues to pile up. So very challenging.
Thank you.
Paula?
Very quickly, just, you were mentioning the St. Louis Park model and working with that partnership with that private company.
Can't hear you at all, Paula.
Because I forgot to clip up. Sorry about that. Working with the St. Louis Park company, which would, it looks like that would be a twenty-five percent decrease if we got similar numbers from them. I mean, so I'm assuming that you're kind of thinking about that in terms of potentials.
One of our goals is to help drive those repeat calls down and try to eliminate as best we can those calls that just keep repeating, where they can be solved by really putting them in touch with the proper resources so that we can focus on the calls that are going to continue to rise, so.
Right, okay. So I'm assuming that that's one of the areas of flexibility we need. And then the other thing is that you mentioned that we'll be up to forty-seven full-time employees by hopefully twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight or so. And, you know, you're talking about the different vehicles that were needed and that you needed to keep personnel with, you know, and this all goes into the truck thing, the truck needs and the engine needs. With the increased full-time employees, would there be, and since so many of our calls now are for mental health or medical, is there a way, like Edina has their own ambulance? I know we can't do that currently unless things change at the state level. But is there a way forward or some sort of scenario you might see in the future where we can decrease our wear and tear on large engines and things because we have the full-time, enough full-time staff to maybe do these things or something in conjunction with what Kimberly was talking about in terms of Hennepin County? Are there, I'm assuming these things are all percolating for you guys.
Absolutely, yeah. So, you know, once we can ensure that we have the proper number of the trucks that we need to be able to respond to emergencies, we would look at smaller vehicles. Like, we, like, right now, we run a small rescue on a lot of our medicals, and that takes the brunt of a lot of wear and tear for those calls. It's cheaper to repair, it's cheaper to replace. We can get them a lot faster. They're essentially just pickup with a fabricated body put on them. So, you know, I would not be surprised if at some point we start to, down the road, start to employ something similar to that again to...
But right now, it's hard because we don't have the staffing and we need to keep the equipment with the staffing. So if they're out, they need to respond to a fire, which only happens about twelve times a year, but you never know when it's going to happen. Got it? Thank you.
They would just schedule those darn fires.
Yeah, dang it.
Oh, boy, that'd be easy. That would be fantastic. Any other questions?
I just had one. I read, it said that, so we talked a little bit about how the police are responding to medical EMT calls. And it said here, which I was, I underlined, because even if not trained to the full EMT one level, still must respond. How does that work?
So...
So your call, so the police are called, I mean, it's, you know, it's...
So right, so right now, based on the call types, so there are, when someone calls in the dispatch, if it's a certain call type, like somebody who's in cardiac arrest, stroke, or some high level, some, you know, major injury, because we're mobile, our police response is much quicker. And all of our officers have a minimum of EMR training, they're emergency first responders. They don't, aren't EMTs, and that just gives you one level. But we find, one, to become an EMT is, there's a lot of training, and for us to get all our new people through it is very difficult. Because we have fire staff that can come out and really, I mean, we go on medical calls where someone maybe have like a tummy ache. Okay, we can handle it with one officer. We go there, maybe provide oxygen. We carry, we carry a lot of our stuff on, in our vehicles. And so we can do a lot, because we are the primary responder and we're in the field. When it comes to someone who's in cardiac arrest, then fire is going to go with us because it involves a lot more medical treatment.
Yeah.
And so at some point, you may see that if there's enough fire personnel, they become the primary first responder. And our numbers are a lot lower. Like, we responded to almost forty-three thousand, six hundred calls for service. Of that are medicals, are about four thousand. So, you know, and so we're kind of in transition right now. As they come onboard, we're going to hopefully offload that, and we'll still be there for like cardiac arrest, because you want, you know, quick response, get the defibrillator. You, we still need that. And because we're mobile, we can get there very, we can get there very quickly. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah.
Would you say, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask, any other, other questions? I mean, I had one related question, but go ahead, Mike.
Oh, I was just going to mention, I have a question for both of our chiefs. I think, at least in my experience too, in, in working in government for a few decades, when people called nine-one-one, rewind the clock twenty years ago when people called nine-one-one, it was real life or death kind of situations. People call nine-one-one today for toothaches, tummy aches. I mean, there's just things that you would never think of calling years ago. So that's, that's what's driving a lot of our call line, too, is just the almost misuse in some ways of nine-one-one.
That's the problem, that's part of the EMS crisis that's developed nationwide is, you know, nine-one-one and police and fire have really become the primary care provider for a lot of people. That's just the way it is. We are, we're their doctors. And, you know, that's, continues to drive that call volume up. And until something is done, and it's going to take people a lot smarter than me to figure that out, but until that's done, it's going to continue to be an issue.
Well, it's the classic thing. I mean, my question for you, Kevin, was what proportion of your medicals are lift assists?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but it's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Every day.
Yeah, I mean, if you're shooting from the hip, is it five percent, ten percent, twenty percent? You know...
I would say ten, ten percent or more. But a lot of those that come in as lift assists actually turn out to be more serious because what, people are stubborn. So sometimes they'll say, I just fell and I need help getting up. But we'll get there, we find out they hit their head, they have a head injury. You know, there's other problems that go along with that. We had one that we're going to be giving an award tomorrow. Came out as a lift assist, and they got there and our firefighter realized they were in sepsis. And saved the patient's life by making sure they got to the hospital instead of just picking them up and being on our way, so.
Yeah. I think that's an important, that's an important story. Because, I mean, obviously, again, I mean, if they, if they could schedule the fires and we knew they were just lift assists, you know, you could, you could, you could do it a lot more cheaply.
Right.
But we don't, we don't have that luxury. That's the challenge. Well, anything else?
I just closing comment real quick there.
Yes.
Mayor, I just have, just really quickly, because I am seriously going to log off right now. Go get, go for it. Go get horizontal. But at the National League of Cities, I did attend a deep-dive session with some granting information that I will send to Mr. Funk and the police chief, because there were a lot of grants out there for some of the things that we're talking about. And it was mostly mental health and police-focused. But there's a lot of money floating around, and they have some good granting sites that maybe we already know about, but I'll send it around. So I just wanted to state it for the record.
Thanks, Deb. Go get horizontal. You know, nobody in this room is going to be very far behind you on that.
Right.
Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Maybe just to wrap things up tonight, a lot of information. So thank you, Council. I know it was a long night. Tonight was intended to begin that foundation that we're laying for the twenty twenty-five budget. The presentation, as you saw tonight, we do put that on our website for residents to see. But we'll email that to you as well, so you have everything that was presented here tonight. Again, it was important for, I think, for staff and for myself to really take a look back at twenty twenty-three. So you got to see that tonight from our directors, a look back of twenty twenty-three, identify those challenges, and then give you a sense of what we're looking at moving ahead. I'll say this again a hundred times, but we are a top-notch city. I know you know that, and there's so much that we can be proud of. And I don't want to leave anyone with the impression that the challenges noted tonight don't signal anything troubling, but really, it's a sign of our commitment to continuous improvement. It's a, it's a sign that we're forward-thinking and really looking to make sure that we stay a top city. So again, I know you got a good sense of the challenges. We also did touch on strategic plan action steps. We did that earlier this year. So I know there's a, you recognize there's a whole body of work, not just what we're talking about here this evening, but also with the strategic plan. Those action steps, we do have upcoming, as you know, in April, our strategic plan refresh. So all these data points will be brought back into that budget kickoff meeting in May. And so tonight, we'll continue to, again, lay in that foundation. We'll bring a lot more data to you at that budget kickoff in May. You'll see a lot of this again as we move forward, as we again try to tackle, tackle the challenges and look forward to positioning the city well into the future. So with that, I turn it back over to you, Brad. I think the last agenda item, if you just want me to jump into that?
Yeah, just go ahead, just go ahead.
Next, next study session is April fifteenth. Two big topic items. One will be bringing back the zoning diagnostic report. So Julie and Zone Co. will be here for that. And then Mr. O'Day will be back on our community facility studies, so really in-depth conversation, too. So those two items, again, I know we tried to be done by nine. Appreciate your time here tonight. We knew it'd be a longer meeting, but hopefully next time we'll be done by nine.
All right. And I just want to, I want to thank, I want to thank staff and everyone. A lot of work goes into all this good stuff. And thanks, thanks for hanging in here. I mean, we get to be here just as long as you do, but, but anyway, thanks very much. There's a lot of, there's, there's important stuff on the table, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.